With Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington for a food pantry program out of the consent agenda so that Councilmember Siemens can recoup himself from that vote. Other than that, our agenda is the same for this evening. Looking to the future, we have after tonight, two more city council meetings before our August recess. On July 19th next week, we will meet here at 7:30. Our voting items will be a resolution authorizing submission of legislative action requests to the Maryland Municipal League, second reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2018 budget amendment number one, first reading ordinance authorizing FY 2018 stormwater budget amendment number one. Our work sessions next week will be a discussion of the 2017 city elections and a discussion of a resolution establishing the city council goals and priorities for the Tacoma Park Police Department. A draft of that resolution is up on the website, and so if folks want to take a look at that, it comes out of the meetings we've had in June mostly, and before that discussing what we want to see as the goals for the police department as we search for a new police chief. Then Wednesday, July 26th, we have a number of voting items. We have a resolution providing for the city council summer recess, a resolution establishing the city's goals and priorities for the Tacoma Park Police Department. Next, we have two single reading ordinances, one for awarding a contract for an executive search services firm for a police chief, and one for lobbying services at the county level. The city manager will be sending around an email to the city council early next week to discuss how to get council involvement and looking over what we've received so far before we have that vote on July 26th. We will also have on July 26th, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for an on-call engineering service, a resolution providing for appointments to committees, and we also have a resolution accepting the new collective bargaining agreement with police officers. Our work session on July 26th will be a discussion of selecting a development partner for the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, and we will see those proposals this evening. And then the city council is on recess until early September. So that is our agenda items coming up. Next, we will have public comment on our voting items. The first voting item is the first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2018 budget amendment number one. If anyone has any comments on that, they can come to the podium. No? All right. Our second voting item is a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2018 stormwater budget amendment number one. Any comments on that? No? Our next is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for construction of Ethan Allen's streetscape improvements. Any public comments on that? Next, as I said, we will pull from our consent agenda a single reading ordinance awarding the contract for services with Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington for a food pantry program. Does anyone have comments on that? All right. Our next item is our consent agenda, and our consent agenda, we have a single reading ordinance awarding contract for services with educare support services for a food pantry, and we also have a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of IT server equipment, software installation. Any comments on the consent agenda? Now we'll move to general public comments. If anyone has any public comments this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes, and we'll get the microphone for you, Mr. Lovelace.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Mr. Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I want to tell you people what a wonderful time I had at the Fourth of July Parade. It was a great turnout, I believe. Fourth of July Parade is always a good turnout, and this year we had a lot of people. And of course, I was in there up with the antique cars and city council people, it all adds up to the front contingent, and I want to thank everybody for what they've done. I also met a person at the Fourth of July Parade who's going to be able to get me to more meetings. I talked to him last night, his name is Richard Payne, and he brought me to the meeting tonight. He's going to be coming later on to pick me up. I also want to ask them if they could get the schools to participate in teaching local government, trying to get the people out here so that they can learn and how to take part in community participation, what they can do to help their community and learn more about it. It'd be great because we don't seem to have many people coming to the meetings a lot of times, and I'd like to see more people coming to these meetings and speaking up on what they can do to make this city a better place for all of us. And also, we had a great demonstration against the death penalty last end of June, you know, during the starving for justice, which began on June 28th and ended on July the 2nd. And it's a fast individual for justice at the Supreme Court in DC. I'd also like to thank people who did participate in that demonstration. And I'd like to say a get well wish for Candace Wolf. She's the one who used to bring me to the meetings for quite a while, and she now is recovering from hip surgery. And apparently, the surgeons did a really good job on her, and she's at home now recovering. So everybody wish Candace Wolf a speedy recovery and a real successful one, too. Also, I'd like to see what we can do to get the National Night Out a bigger success, too. Because I believe that's coming up on the first week in August, the first Tuesday, I believe, in August, about 5:30. I may be wrong on the date, but it's usually the first week in August, Tuesday. So please try to come out to that. There's no meetings in August, as you all know, but please come out to take part in the community affairs as you see them. Thank you very much. Peace.
Any other public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Priscilla Labavitz, and I'm a member of the Friends of the Tacoma Park Rec Center, and I know that the proposals received will be on the agenda tonight. But I just want to tell you a couple of things that I think, there's about half a dozen of us here in the audience tonight. I've taken classes at the Tacoma Park Rec Center, and I volunteered at it, and that's how I found out that it is old, it's in poor condition, especially compared with the community center here. Thank you. I want you to choose a plan for the city which will not cost the city, that is, the taxpayers, a bond issue that will not cost millions of dollars or not need a bond issue. If we can get grants that require matching, I'd like the city to match them. I am willing, and I think other members of the Friends will be happy to lobby the county and the state to invest in our rec center, and also for lobby the council to see that you will match any reasonable grants that request that. But we are not looking for the city to spend a huge amount of money. This is, we don't understand this to be a new community center, a new library, but something that will be, that would be pretty much self-financing because of the developers that we understand are willing to put housing in the same space, and we would like it on New Hampshire Avenue. That would require housing that they can make some money for, or at least do the Lord's work, and as well as provide us with the rec center. As I said, we want it in the same, in the present site, and we feel you should, we should do a land swap, and I think we should do it with the county, and I think we should do it quickly because everything depends on that. Without the land, which is desirable, nobody's going to want to build, nobody's going to want to build our rec center. So, and it's possible that the county will change its mind about the land swap. Maybe they'll, maybe they think I should stop talking. We are pleased to have affordable housing at the site, and we think that this is all in keeping with the city and its people's goals and beliefs. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? You can come just to the podium, state your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Nancy Nikell. I just came from the rec center. I live on the border of Tacoma, I live in East Silver Spring, but right on the border of Tacoma Park, right there at Chicago Avenue. I teach at the rec center. I just came from my Pilates class this evening, and I just want to say that it's, John Webster has done an amazing job there over the years, and Vince is doing a wonderful job now. We need to keep the rec center going. If there's going to be a new building, we need to find some way to hold the classes and activities while it's, while any construction is occurring. I remember, you know, shortly after I moved to Silver Spring, the armory was demolished. It took years for the civic center to be built, and I don't think it has as much space or as much affordable space. There's a tendency when an older, humble, the rec center is an older building, it's rather humble, but I think that the creativity that flows there is enabled somewhat by the fact that it's not a fancy place. And I certainly wouldn't want it to be replaced by something fancy and expensive where the classes would be too expensive for people or where it would be an intimidating environment. And we do need to be able to keep the classes going somewhere while the construction is underway, and that's all. Thank you.
Any other public comments today?
Hi, everybody. Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two, Parents of Special Needs Adults Founder. Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, mayor, council, administrators. I'm here, please don't forget our kids. They may be, some of them in their 30s or even 40, but they're our kids, and we're the canaries in the mine. When anybody, we are of all races, all nationalities, all sexual orientations, but we can't speak, our kids cannot speak for themselves, unlike anybody else, everybody else. So please consider them, and when you're thinking, I understand you'd give some money for therapeutic recreation, that's fine. I would like to work with you, we would like to work with you on that, on getting this class or classes or whatever defined and off on the road and going. And also, my second thing, of course, is gentrification, and that really affects me. I have a biracial son, and I really, we moved into our neighborhood primarily because of it. It was mixed racially and economically, and now, I mean, I don't want to sound anti-rich people, but that's what it's becoming. The house, two houses sold directly across from me for $690,000 each, about, I think one was $680,000, and they weren't like mansions. People come in, these home flippers, I hate the word flippers, when I see them on TV, I like, they come in, they buy these houses, they renovate them, and they sell them for $100,000. Somebody, neighbors, said that flippers got $100,000 for one of those houses, just for doing administrative work. And they sell it outrageous prices that most of my friends can afford, and a friend of mine recently, as people know, had to move to Hyattsville. A good friend who was a great person and who has a special needs child, they had to move to Hyattsville, and it really upsets me that this is happening over and over. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Nope. Okay, then we will move to council comments. Any council comments? We've been off for two weeks. No, all right, there they go. Councilmember Kowalski.
Thanks, mayor. First, I want to say welcome back to our amazing city manager, and I know you've been off for some tough reasons, and we're really happy to have you back. And I should note, first of all, happy birthday publicly, we have the same birthday on June 12th. But two, you left the city in great hands with Jason Dan Weber and the city clerk, so you, everything was fine while you were gone, and we appreciate that you had to take some time off. I hope everybody had a chance to go to the July 4th parade. I'll be completely honest about my role as an elected official, is that leading up to the July 4th parade, it's not my most favorite thing to do. I'm like, why do I have to march in this parade? Why can't I be sitting with people, having a beer, and enjoying these great floats going by? But then when you're done doing it, and you hear and see your constituents who are so excited about the day and celebrating our independence and just our community, it's actually pretty awesome. So I had a great time being there with many neighbors and residents, including Pat Rumba, who's here, who nicely offered me a hot dog, which I obliged with, so thank you very much. One other thing that I should note for the city manager and the mayor and my constituents is that next week, I'm going to be out of town, but I will be participating by phone. But I just wanted you all to know that my absence is something that I do not take lightly. And finally, one thing that I wanted to raise, which I raised in my Ward Three update this year, or this, today, not this year, is that I will not be seeking reelection in the fall. It has been one of my greatest honors to serve not only Ward Three in the city and work alongside a great city staff and some great people on this dais up here, and it was never about the hard work. I don't have any qualms about doing hard work, and I actually very much enjoy working hard for our constituents and our cities and the issue, our city and the issues that we deeply care about. So I want to thank everybody for the privilege to do this job because it's pretty awesome for somebody who's a first-generation American. My parents would have never imagined that I would do something like this. So I want to thank Ward Three residents particularly. This is largely a personal issue for my family and I, and by personal, I mean, unlike, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, my colleagues, I'm the only renter on this dais up here. I rent my home, and we have for the last three years. And we have come very close in the last couple of years to buying a home in Ward Three, but we've also looked outside of Ward Three, and I just owe it to my family to not limit ourselves in where we seek a home for ourselves. And frankly, just a few months ago, we had a very heated discussion about council members, Mills, very honorable, and I'm so glad, issue that passed, which is election synchronization. And I was the only council member, I think, that proposed an amendment that frankly would cut against my own personal interests. I would appreciate another year term because I actually would personally benefit for that. I think I might be renting for another year. But it was never, this job was never about doing what's best for me personally, but for the community and future councils, council members. So for me, I need to have the flexibility, and as a former proud member of the Board of Elections, which is how I started my community activism here, I could not in good conscience reelect myself, not that it's a foregone conclusion, but, and then say that, hey, I bought a house in Councilmember Mills' Ward or somewhere else, and I would need to resign based on the charter, and then would require the city to pay money out of pocket for an unexpected special election. But I say all this to say that I will have a lot to say about why I'm not running and moving forward, and I'll take advantage of this dais and my ability to make council comments and opine about things to my very last day in November. But I say finally to say this, I encourage everybody in our community in Ward Three and throughout the city to consider running. You don't have to have any prior experience. In fact, if you care about this community, you should consider running. I will say this, we need more women up here, we need more people of color up here, we need more people who are single up here, we need more people of various backgrounds up here, because that perspective, not that any of these esteemed individuals who are up here who do work so hard for your city don't have important perspectives, but bringing different perspectives to your city government is essential to ensuring that every facet of our community is represented adequately. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. I just wanted to put that out there publicly before somebody asks you and you said you never heard it from me first, so thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to just say a word or two about my colleague's announcement, which of course I wasn't expecting to since I just heard about that, but Rizzi and I got onto the council at the same time at the last election, and I remember so clearly in the very first meeting that he made it clear that he was going to introduce a resolution that was aimed at the really unfortunately negative and bad in so many ways, comments about the governor to the extent that he would try to prevent Syrian refugees from coming into the country. And I think that was just the beginning of a great period of advocacy that we've had with having Rizzi up here, and his contributions have been so valuable, I think, to me and I assume to the rest of us, so it's unfortunate that he is going to be moving on. There are a couple of houses going on the market in Ward One, so I'll be talking to you about that separately. Couple other things I wanted to just mention, participating in the parade was really incredible also, as it always is, and I've found, last time, and it was true again this time, that when I'm marching with my wife and by, next to a vintage car, I'm sort of at least the third most important entity out there. But there was one other example of forced humility, because I was in that early phase that Rizzi was talking about with all the politicians, and there's not really a lot of parade-type floats, so we're walking along, and I hear one mother say to her son, but this is the parade, honey, this is the parade. Okay, I get it, you know, they didn't come out, they didn't come out to see us. So it's worth, it's worth keeping that in mind. One other quick thing, and then one other, just slightly longer thing, there had been a problematic facade in one of the storefronts in Old Town where in fact, a piece of concrete had even fallen on the sidewalk when people were walking by, and so I had mentioned this to city staff, and it was taken care of, so I appreciate that. And I agree that Jason did an amazing job, and things were good, but not so good that you should think about leaving us again. So I wanted to just mention one thing that will take just a bit longer, and if my colleagues don't mind, we've talked in the past about the Montgomery College building plans, and it's coming to a point where a decision's going to be made soon on the location of the revised Mass Science Building, and I just want to take a couple of moments to update folks on where that stands. So we've had a roughly two-year process, and there have been many meetings and a lot of correspondence, testimony, and more recently, three community conversations, which the city co-sponsored with the college, and a very complex set of issues, but through that process, we've narrowed down to really two potential locations for the new Mass Science Building, which everybody in the community agrees does need to be built. And both of them, one is in the current master plan that the college has, and the other's in the previous master plan, they're both along Fenton Avenue. One would be closer to the newer student union that's at the point there at the end, right before you get into Silver Spring, and the other would be back a little bit on Fenton Avenue, closer to the residential area and Bell's Eagle or Park. So those are the two locations. They'd be roughly the same size, and the other difference I think is worth noting is that in the current plan, the one that would replace the building closer to the residential area would also get rid of the pool and the phys ed, on-campus phys ed facilities. And following the third of those community conversations, the mayor and I sent a letter advocating using the previous master plan as the plan to, for the basis of deciding the location. So that would be the site closer to the current student union, the Nunley Building. And I was pleased that a couple of neighborhood groups, one from Tacoma Park, one from Silver Spring, also did letters along those lines. The Montgomery Planning Board Chair, Casey Anderson, did a letter along those lines, and four of our county council members sent letters in varying ways supporting or encouraging that the previous master plan be the one that would be used. And now, and this is really what I want to get to, Montgomery College has put out a survey, it's accessible on the city website, just type in Montgomery College, and you'll get to Facilities Master Plan, you can click on, and it's a survey, and it's asking people for their comments on which of the two sites that they would prefer. The deadline is July 21st, so I think it's really important for everybody to, who cares about this, to respond, and we expect the final decision, which is up to the college president sometime in August. I urge everybody to respond. I just want to make four key points about the survey. One, there will still be the charrette process once the site is chosen, and there's mandatory referral, which is the county process. Both of those and other public processes will allow for significant public input into design and construction, including questions like height and how long the construction takes. One of the key points is the survey talks about the previous master plan being four stories, and I just want to be clear, this gets very complex, and I don't want to get bogged down in details, but the previous master plan calls for three stories and four stories. So there's still plenty of room here for some discussion about size and height and so on. And again, the precise details will be developed through those public processes. Lastly, if you do comment before the 21st, please do, explain what your connection is. I'm a stakeholder because I live near there. I'm a stakeholder because I use the pool. I'm a stakeholder because I'm a student there. It just helps to clarify. Everybody can read everybody else's comments, I think it'll be a good way to get a nice, positive look at all the different comments. So I'll stop there, and I appreciate my colleagues letting me just talk a little bit longer than usual, given the deadline, I just wanted to make sure that was out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz.
It seems like a long time that I've been away from the city council meeting, so it's kind of like good to get back, besides the air conditioning works in here now, and it is, I'm so, it's, you know, we can take air conditioning for granted, but when you don't have it, you notice it big time. Again, I want to say welcome back to our city manager, Suzanne Ludlow, whose loss of her husband has been, grieves us all, and I know that's going to, it's been a hard time, but it's good to have you back, and I want to say again, just again to Jason, that I think we, all of us felt very strongly that you didn't miss a beat during the whole time, you were able to carry the water, and did a wonderful job in enabling us to continue to do all the things that we need to do and the city needs to do. So thank you for that. For people who might be interested, the, on New Hampshire Avenue, the Taco Bell opened on, a week ago today, last Wednesday, July 5th, there was not a grand opening. That's partly because the Taco Bell people just didn't see the need for it, and so it took a long time for reasons that aren't worth going into right now, but it is open. And when we were, my wife and I went there for a romantic dinner last Thursday night. Oh, it was terrific. Anyway, the place was really busy. For people who might be interested, on New Hampshire Avenue, the Taco Bell opened on a week ago today, last Wednesday, July 5th. There was not a grand opening. That's partly because the Taco Bell people just didn't see the need for it. And so, it took a long time for reasons that aren't worth going into right now, but it is open. And when we were, my wife and I went there for a romantic dinner last Thursday night. Oh, it was terrific. Anyway, the place was really busy, and the food was good. And the nice thing is, is that it's really affordable stuff. Having said that, the last thing I want to bring up to the city manager's attention is it's, and this is changing the subject to the Tacoma Junction project. It's been exactly six months or a few days since the city council made its final decision with regard to giving the developer the green light to proceed on the project, and as it happened to refer to the co-op, co-op's involvement in that project. And so, it's been a long time since that phase was completed, and I think it's time would be very helpful for us to have an update, either from the developer, Mr. Washington himself, or simply from staff, exactly where things stand and what the prognosis is for the next steps that we'll be going through, or we can expect from the developer with regard to the site plan and its presentation to us and to its presentation to the planning board. So, whenever you can do that, that would be great. Hopefully, maybe next week or something. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm shocked to realize that my two colleagues to my right have both announced that they won't be running in the election this year. Disappointed. I know that Councilmember Schultz, given his reasons, it sounds kind of final. It sounds to me, though, that Mr. Kreshe may have an out, and that is that if he finds a house in Ward, in Ward Three, that he may continue to consider running this year. So, we encourage you to step up your search for a house, and wish you the best, have luck with that.
Ward Six.
And then I also would like to welcome back the city manager. We did miss you and give you our prayers for just time. I, you know, joined my colleagues in letting you know what a good job that Jason did in your, in your stead, and, you know, I found that, you know, he was able to, as Councilmember Kreshe said, able to handle all the issues that we brought forward, and I was really surprised with the grace that he did. And every time I called him, he said, "Sure, could you bring that back in a couple of weeks?" That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
All right, I have a couple of things. One, I want to thank Lucy Neary and all those who participated in the I Shine Camp, I Can Shine Camp. It's a, I know the city manager's going to talk about it in her comments as well, but it's a wonderful camp that helps young people with disabilities learn how to ride a bike on their own. And it sounds awesome, and it's even terrific to actually go and watch the process and see the different bikes that they graduate up to. And I know Councilmember Mills' daughter was there helping out. So, I think this is our third or fourth year, and I hope we are able to do it again. I want to join in the thanks for all the volunteer work that goes into the Fourth of July Parade and the fireworks, and to really stress that our parade and fireworks is a volunteer effort. I think sometimes people forget that it is put on by volunteers. Our city staff, of course, our rec department, our police department do help out, but arranging all of that, organizing everyone who comes that day to march in the parade is all done by volunteers, and we very much appreciate that. Since Captain Collington's here, I want to mention that we have our wonderful youth police explorers, who are young people who come to and meet with our police department. They learn things like CPR and do other type of activities to learn about careers in law enforcement. And they held a car wash a couple of weeks ago, and it was a great opportunity to get to meet some of the young explorers. And so, it's a great program, and I just want to thank everyone in the police department who's been part of that. While I'm on the police department, I also want to mention, you know, every now and then we have these waves of people who break into cars during the middle of the night, kind of go through your car, look for things, and then you wake up in the middle of the, in the morning, and you see someone's been through your glove compartment and everything. And we had a rash of that on Sycamore this week, and I would like just to tell everyone that there were a number of people who really commended the police department, because I think earlier in the week and last week, our police department has been really being very proactive in terms of sending out information on listservs and through the police alerts to remind people not to leave things in clear sight that would have someone want to break into their cars. And in addition, they were actually in, on Sycamore, going up and down the street, looking in cars and leaving notes for people to remind them not to leave things in their cars. Unfortunately, we still had some people going through cars last night, but I wanted to let everyone know, and particularly Captain Collington, since he's here, that that proactive work was noticed by the residents. And then, just to follow up on what Mr. Lovelace said, August 1st, so the very first Tuesday in August, August 1st is National Night Out. So, we hope everyone will stay tuned for more information and join us that evening. A couple of updates, I was contacted again by Mr. Garing, who is the teacher who oversees the difference makers at Tacoma Park Middle School, and they are very close with the help of our city clerk in putting together a proposal for a youth council that if we don't get it this summer, we will get it first thing in September. So, we are really, really close right now, and I just want to say thank you to our city clerk in helping provide some useful feedback to Mr. Garing and the students who are putting that together. The hope is to have the council up and running this fall. The second thing is, as I mentioned, back in April, I met with representatives of the county exec's office, their Office of Community Partnerships, to explore the Tacoma Park becoming a sister city with a city in somewhere else in the world. Those conversations are continuing, and I'm hoping to get more information to share with the city council about the possibility of us partnering with the county program on sister cities. So, I just want to give folks a heads up. And then, lastly, I will just add my welcome back to our city manager. You said seven weeks, but it kind of felt like seven months to me. It was, we very much missed you, and we're glad to have you back. And I just want to say thank you very much to our deputy city manager, who very much kept things running smoothly and did an awesome job, and I'm sure he's glad you're back as well. Terrific. All right, let's get to city manager comments.
Yes, I wrote on the top of my notes, I'm back. It has been good to be back, and as you've all mentioned, the wheels kept turning, and I appreciate it very much. We have just wonderful staff here, and the fact that they can just do that and really keep things moving is something I'm very proud of and relieved about, that I didn't have to worry about activities within the city. I do know that the council worked really hard during this time, and I appreciate that as well. So, I've been going back to look at some of the information on the deliberations related to police policies and that kind of thing, I appreciate that insight very much. A couple items to follow up on last council meeting, items that have been brought up, question about the status of putting tree boxes in Old Town. We have the tree box, tree boxes in, they're complex apparently to install, there's some kind of fencing around the trees. We will be doing a couple a week for the next several weeks. Good, glad, glad we're moving on that. Also, we just wanted to note that we have had a survey on the desired qualities and characteristics of a police chief that has been up on the website in both English and Spanish, and we're looking to prepare one in Amharic, it probably will be in written format, but we were trying to get that as available for people as well. One thing I'm happy about is that we've received a number of proposals for our county lobbyist position and for a search firm for the police chief. And so, that information was mentioned by the mayor coming up, that we were hoping to be able to award contracts at the last meeting in July, and I'll be talking with you about kind of what we're looking at for those two reviews of proposals. Wanted to give an update on the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. The data analysis phase of the project is well underway, it's to be finalized, we're hoping later this month. The second phase of the project, which is to be completed in August, is intended to provide an analysis of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats identified by the community through a community survey, which has been done. Stakeholder interviews were almost complete, I know two council members have not done that, so if you can connect with Sarah, that'd be wonderful, because that's almost complete. And then, there was a Facebook Live listening session, which has been completed. The final phase of the project, which is the development of the strategic plan, is expected in October, and we're excited to see that. Kind of in the fun mode, and it's nice when it's air conditioning, but it's hot outside, and we're doing Operation Chill with the police department and 7-Eleven. We have a way for law enforcement personnel to kind of award some good kudos to kids that they see doing the right thing, whether it's ride a bike, have their helmet on while they're riding a bicycle, or helping out, or doing something. They can get kind of a ticket that allows them to get a Slurpee, and a free Slurpee at 7-Eleven. And so, I'm trying to think of good things to do so I can get a Slurpee, Captain Collington.
Did you get one yesterday? It was free.
Well, I know, it was free the other day. We got, yeah, for other days, you can get it free too, if you do this. One thing that I'm excited about addresses the issue of mosquitoes in town, and we have a group of residents associated with the Committee on the Environment, they're calling themselves the Buzz Killers, to help raise awareness about how to abate mosquitoes in the Tacoma Park area. And one of the things that was suggested was that we could have these, they're called GAT traps, that are mosquito traps, which are pesticide-free, can be available to the members of the public at the cost that the city pays plus tax. So, we're expecting, apparently they're on their way, so they may even be in by Friday. As soon as they come in, we'll let people know. They recommend if somebody wants them that they get two, so there's one in their front yard and one in their backyard, as a way to help cut down mosquitoes. One of the things that has been raised by the Nuclear Free Committee is kind of what the timeline is to consider their request to transition our financial holdings from SunTrust Bank to another bank. And they had come this past February, the, at the time, there was a kind of a decision to kind of go with an 18-month process that would really look at priorities and a little bit of a systematic process to determine what would be the good approach moving forward. So, I have sketched out a timeline for that. It's an aggressive timeline, so, you know, we'll try to make this work. For the summer and fall of this year, we would prepare for and hold discussions with the council about banking investments and priorities. And those kind of priorities that we would be looking at are things such as involvement in nuclear weapons industry, fossil fuels, the defense industry, their participation in community investments, in environmental sustainability, and the costs and the services of the, that they provide as a banking entity. That we would engage a financial consultant to assist with determining the levels of tolerance that we have for these various things, because we may not get a pure system. So, how much, how much is bad on some of these things, and how much is good on some of these various priorities? And also, that can kind of quantify the financial implications that might be involved in switching banks. In the winter, we could have a council resolution establishing those goals and priorities after having thought them through, developing a request for proposal for banks to determine the extent to which the banks are able to meet the council's goals, evaluate those proposals, and then determine the financial and ethical costs and benefits of each. In the winter or spring, there could be a public hearing to talk about those, because I think sometimes that may be just useful, it's not a requirement, you certainly will have votes, that there will be times for council comments, public comments on a council action, but we may actually want some other kind of public hearing on this, to discuss the financial and ethical costs and benefit trade-offs. Then staff would make a recommended council on an action, and the council would then vote whether or not to move the city's financial holdings. It's very helpful to have it by this time, because then there are expected to be costs involved in this, and it could be included in the budget for FY '19. And then, in the summer, after we've completed the budget, that's when we could start a transition, if that's what the direction is of council. And I'll share this then with the Nuclear Free Committee. I don't know if Mary Jane Machuie's still here, but I have a letter that I'll be sending to her. We've gotten a number of inquiries about, you know, what is the city doing for families that have adults with special needs? And, you know, I believe we have a lot that we do have underway, I wanted to share that with them, kind of in a written format. Also, clarifying for folks that a municipality isn't really the, supposed to be responsible for social service provision, and recognizing that the families need lots of social services. The counties usually are the entity responsible for that. We've been working to encourage the county to have more of those services more closely located to Tacoma Park, and we'll continue to do so. But one of the things that was raised in some recent discussions was, well, if the library renovation takes place, will people that have disabilities have a harder time and not get as much service during that time? Absolutely not. Right now, the library is the least accessible of the city facilities, so it needs to be upgraded. But when we have services at an alternate location, they must meet ADA requirements, and we will do that. So, I've shared a copy of the letter that will be sent to Ms. Machuie for the PLSMA group, and I think it'll be just useful, especially if, you know, county council members or state delegates ask you questions about it, you can have the information at hand about the various programs that we do. Under kudos, I said up front, and others here said, my biggest kudo is to Jason Danweller for keeping things going while I was gone, and I really, really appreciate his skill. Also, while I was gone, just happened to be the time when Ty Collington was acting, Acting Police Chief. I didn't, I didn't try to pick that time to not be here, but we know that, and I certainly heard lots of wonderful comments from the deputy city manager, that Captain Collington did an excellent job as Acting Chief, and so, we're pleased that he provided us with that service. And beginning today, Captain Rick Bowers has his two-month tour as Acting Chief beginning, and just so thrilled that we have such good captains to be able to keep things going also in the police department. I do mention, the mayor mentioned Lucy Neary on the I Can Shine Bike Camp, which was held the week of June 26th to 30. There were 45 volunteers helping 29 participants, and it's wonderful. It's a lot, it's a big time commitment for the volunteers, I really appreciate that so many people came out. And we had, the Maryland State Highway Administration helped fund the program, along with the city of Tacoma Park. The Tacoma Bicycle served as the bike shop partner. Tool Design Group supported the camp by sending nine volunteers on work time to help out as well. And we got a comment from one mother sharing her son's story. She said, "We are biking every day, he is doing great, and for the first time, he biked with his sister, even in the rain today. This is huge for him, thanks for making a difference in his life." And it's so neat to have those, those things, you know, a week out of the summer, making such a tremendous difference in independence for people in our community. Finally, just hiring updates, we recently welcomed Ms. Kristen Boone to the city team as a new rec manager too in the rec department. I met her, people are so excited that she's here, and she received her BS in exercise and sports science, as well as a master's in kinesiology with a concentration in community and youth sports development. So, we've got, she's very skilled, and she's a neat person, so I'm glad to welcome her to the team. We haven't got the name out here yet, but we also are welcoming an We haven't got the name out here yet, but we also are welcoming an IT manager, I think, later this month, and we're really pleased with that. We're currently advertising for the following open positions: Code Enforcement Officer, Art Coordinator, Crossing Guard, Right-of-Way Maintenance Technician, and we expect to begin advertising for a new police chief in late July or August. So, doing pretty well, I think, on the hiring. Just a final note, I will be away most of tomorrow, and then I'll be Friday, for my husband's memorial service on Friday. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Siemens, do you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And thank you for the report this evening. I too have heard the feeling that social services are usually not done by municipalities, but I would say that the people are our neighbors, and there is no jurisdiction that is closer and more benefited by a healthy constituency than the local government. And I think that if we can be worried about and contribute to things such as a corn silo for residents, we could also be generous in working with social services for those in most need.
I understand, and we certainly, I think, do a lot, you know, I'd love to have the county give us some money for that, and love to assist with, you know, with funds that might come from somewhere else.
Right, understand, thank you.
Councilmember Mill?
Yeah, thank you for the update. I wanted to follow up on one issue. Given how long it might take to get a response, I'd encourage the city to send a letter to the corporate national leadership of SunTrust, and basically just indicate what it is that we're thinking about doing and why, and give them a chance to offer up information. And I say that partly because the intent, I think, one of the intents of our Nuclear Free policy is to create behavioral change in industries that currently support nuclear weapons industry. If we don't tell them that we're potentially considering walking away as a customer, we don't get that effect, so.
I'm happy to send a letter, they've been here, and we've talked to them about it specifically several times, and in fact, you know, they're quite aware. Now, whether that actually changes at a corporate level.
Yeah, and that's where I'm thinking.
That's the point, yeah.
The behavioral change won't happen here, at our branch.
Right.
It'll take, you know, someone in the CEO or Board of Directors' seats to say, "Yeah, why are we doing that?"
Right, and I think, I'm happy to do that. I think that the most important time is after the council has its priorities identified.
And then, just the one other issue, and I saw Ms. Braithwaite is here. The bridge is wonderful, and the company has done a great job on it, but there's sort of two things, one city and one, okay, state or the company. There's a place under the bridge where it looks like the rock has failed, and the drainage has failed, and that there's a, there's a place where during the storms last week, the water went right over the sidewalk, and then created a big erosion gully on the downhill side from the sidewalk.
Is that on the hospital side, or the other side?
The other side.
Okay.
The downstream side.
Okay.
And so it looks like the rocks up the slope are not functioning to divert the water into what is a culvert space, and it'll lead to a future erosion problem below the sidewalk. It's evident right now exactly what happened last week, and so, before they leave, it'd be great to try to get that fixed by state highways or other. And then, on the city side, the new sidewalk is wonderful, but as soon as you get to the Ward Two side, but on the hospital side of the bridge, and you leave the brand-new sidewalk, there's two squares of sidewalk that are just in horrible, horrible condition, and if the Public Works Department could just look at those sort of two squares that are, you know, just sort of, you walk off the new sidewalk, and you immediately basically step into a pit. Just getting those two would be fantastic, in terms of a summer repair.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Siemens, do you have something else?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ledlow sent you, so recently showed support for the city doing social services.
Uh-huh.
Wanted to let you know.
You've got some ideas.
Councilmember Kovar and Councilmember Koresh, you and I have been working with a group committee here in Tacoma Park, trying to assist Syrian refugees to feel welcome in Tacoma Park, and also to transition into the community in a more easy manner. It's very difficult, as you can imagine. Anyways, one of the biggest challenges that they face is employment, coming in often without the skills and without the English language proficiency. We are working with one family right now, where the gentleman is looking for employment. And so as you were talking about, employment opportunities, those may not, you know, may require certain skills and language proficiency that he doesn't possess now, but if you had any ideas on how the city might be able to assist in that, I'd appreciate you letting us know.
Okay, I'd like to talk to you with you offline on about that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on now to our voting session. The first item is the First Reading Ordinance authorizing the FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number One.
And please use the orange version of this.
And I turn it over to the city manager.
Thanks. The first budget amendment each year is always fairly large, and it is always dominated by those items that didn't get done by June 30 and need to be transferred over. And in fact, when you think about when we actually do most of the work on the budget, that's at the beginning of May, so there's a good amount of time, the month of May and June, for us to find out how some of the projects are doing. As we go through the list of items, almost everything here is a carryover item, and I will specify that one item that's not. On the library design, we need to carry over $390,000 from the budget, from FY 17 to FY 18. There was some delay in the library design, and partly, that was because I wasn't here. So, that's moving already again, so we should be able to move quickly on that. We've got carryover needed on the public art projects for murals on Long Eastern and Little Eastern, and on the Conway, Prince George's Avenue mural. We have sidewalk money that needs to be transferred over Flower Avenue, Sycro Creek Parkway Intersection Design, Glen Side Drive Design, sidewalk design, and Larch Avenue sidewalk construction. We need to transfer over the executive search firm funds for the police chief search, $10,000. There was a delay in installation of decorative streetlights, and the amount of $50,000. There were a number of other public works items, installation of the HVAC management system. We've got the HVAC part in, you can fill the AC, but not all the management system is in yet. Purchase of a new leaf box, a large dump truck, trash and recycling containers, all were delayed, and the funds need to be carried over. We have IT items to be carried over, and as I mentioned, we have our new IT manager coming on board in a couple weeks. And so, we'll be able to move quickly on server equipment and maintenance of $64,000, replacement of the closed-circuit TV and circuit security cameras in the community center, $39,000, and transition to a new G Suite email system, yes, for just $10,000, but we're all really, really looking forward to that. It's not as good as AC, but it will be good.
Second.
We want to acknowledge receipt of $15,000 for our Summer Youth Employment Program. That came before the end of the fiscal year, but we need to allocate it for spending. The auditorium projection system was delayed, the equipment was delayed, and that's a $45,000 cost. We have some third-floor improvements that were in the budget that were delayed, because we were discussing, should we do kind of a larger project that wasn't moved forward through the budget, but the regular funds need to be moved over. We have a variety of grant awards that, for various reasons, need to be transferred over, total of $48,800 for that. We have a number of housing and community development operating budget items, including work maintenance on the New Hampshire Avenue green space of $20,000, our contribution to the Montgomery College facilitator process of $1,000, some volunteer expenses, portable projector and tablets, and completion of a records archival and scanning project of $5,000. We have some clerk's office items, some that were delayed, office furniture, and the contracted work for electric file management was delayed. We have some energy efficiency items that were delayed, low-income energy efficiency work of $27,000, installation of LED lighting of $24,000 were delayed, now slated to be completed this fiscal year. And we also need to carry over some of the money for our Sustainability Challenge Awards. We have, on the separate item, this, we're going to have the vote on the stormwater, I mean, on the regular budget first, but we will have a stormwater budget vote second, which would deal with design work for the Kennewick-Cirklin Avenues Stormwater Project of $56,000. The one item that's not a carryover item is the increase in amount for the Ethan Allen Gateway Project. We had bids that came in, and the bids that came in, the lowest bid was $124,823 greater than our engineering estimate for the bids, and the estimate was what we put in our budget. That item, that estimate was about 5.1% higher than the estimate. The State Highway Administration participated in reviewing the bids that came in and the estimates. They are comfortable that there wasn't something kind of off about how that was handled. We did look line by line between the engineering estimate and the bid, and the only difference was somehow underestimating the decorative lights, and something that we'll look forward to in the future, to make sure we don't have that mistake again. Nevertheless, we do need to allocate an additional $124,823 to the Ethan Allen Project, so that we can award the contract to the firm to do the work. Having the decorative lights is an essential part of the project, and I urge it to be moved forward. That's all of the items, altogether, it increases expenditures by $1.4 million, but really the only major difference in the budget is the $125,000.
Great, thank you very much. Any council questions or comments before we take the vote? Councilmember Mill?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about the Ethan Allen Streetscape project and the cost that you just described. And this is both specific to the project, but also just more generally, and I'm not sure how often this has come up. In a bidding and a procurement process under an RFP, when that happens, when you get a cost that's, for example, 5% over what one estimated one was going to put in the budget, can you still keep the RFP as a valid legal process, but work with the winning bidder to negotiate the cost of the project down? And I'm not saying in this specific instance, but just in a general case. So, you know, if we were doing a contract for something for $50,000, and it, we got a lowest bid at $55,000, could you work with the bidder to say, "Okay, well, let's try to, you know, cut back this, or fix that, or use a different piece of equipment for this," as a way to change the project?
For many projects and things, that we exactly do that.
Okay.
This one apparently doesn't really fit. Often, it also depends on how the request for proposal language was, how the request for bid language was placed about the various items. As I said, that was something that we looked at, and they went through and looked at it very carefully. If the number was much higher, I wouldn't even be bringing this to you first. We would have a work session on what do we do about this, should we be rethinking scope, you know, should we be going back and saying, you know, gee, maybe we'll do this in two phases, or something like that. In this case, it doesn't, it's not to the level, I think, that it triggers that. I know Councilwoman Kovar was asking a question about, you know, should we say we're not going to do something because we're increasing this? On this level, I think it's not great enough, and it's early enough in the fiscal year that it doesn't require that, but it's certainly something we need to watch very carefully.
But just from a legal perspective, that's fine, like, you can, it's still consistent?
Often, it is fine, yes, and often we do it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thank you for that information. So, we talked about this a bit, and she was just saying, I was asking about this, this is something that I asked not here, in case people were wondering.
Right, right.
If we were communicating in some other way.
Yes. We're really good.
But if, seriously, if you wouldn't mind just expanding on what we talked about a little bit. So, this is costing a little bit more, I support the project, and I think we should go forward with all the aspects of it, so that's not really the question. To me, the question is, you know, should we look elsewhere in the budget, and maybe not in any way connected to this, for something to compensate for that? And I think you talked about how our capital expenditures work, but maybe if you wouldn't mind just expanding on that a little bit now.
Sure, well, just the mere fact that, you know, we're talking over a million dollars of things that needed to be carried over at the end, you know, that didn't get done in June 30, there's a little bit of slide. And so there's a certain amount where maybe work on a different project takes just a little bit longer, so that within the fiscal year, or the scope of another project changes, which often happens, and you cut out something, that there's some flexibility, and it accommodates for that increased amount. It often depends on kind of what kind of thing it is. I really, because it's a capital project, so it's a one-time cost, it doesn't trigger the same kind of concerns that an increase in an ongoing cost would.
Right, I see that, yeah.
And so, that's part of what we look at when we're going through these numbers. It was also very helpful that there was such close scrutiny about what was the issue, and is it, if it was on something that had been a very discretionary item anyway, I'd bring that back to you to say, "Do we want to go forward on this discretionary item?" So, it's, it's a...
Okay, and so, just one other question then. So technically, let's assume we approve this now, and we sort of wait and see as the progress goes forward on other expenditures, but where does this money, quote-unquote, come from?
It comes from our reserves.
Okay.
So right now, you know, I'm not saying it's going to come out of some other project that gets pushed back, it's coming from our reserves, and so, we are not going to...
But we have the option, as we go forward, to consider...
We have the option of, as we go forward, to see how the reserves are going, and through the course of the year, to see how the, how our financial records are coming in.
Thank you.
Michelle, sorry.
Yeah, just... Let me just comment, is that, with regard to Mr. Kovar's question, is that anytime you do this kind of a capital project, you, there's also the additional prospect of what we would call cost overruns, is that when the project, when the contractor gets on site...
Right, there could be change orders or different things.
Yeah, there could be something that's discovered that nobody knew about.
Right.
Or there's change orders, and those change orders can be positive or negative.
That's right.
Change orders, and sometimes you get done, and the project gets done quicker than you thought, and not as costly. So, the fact that you've got a 5.1% elevation over the estimated budget, to me, seems like a pretty darn close estimate, and for something like this. I mean, on a project this, it's a complicated project, because it's got a lot of variables. You also have the State Highway Administration involved.
Yeah.
So that it could easily have been a bigger surprise. I just wanted to add a couple things, is that there's three different things in here that affect Ward Six, one of which I have a question about, but the other two is that one of them is the last item, the stormwater design work for Kennewick. There's a traffic circle there that is also a bio-retention basin that was installed about five years ago, I believe. And it was not well-designed at the time, that's been readily admitted by our Department of Public Works. So, engineering work was done, it was ascertained that a stormwater hookup could be made with the cooperation of Saul, the property, the shopping center next door, which is owned by Saul Centers, which would have rendered considerable savings. And so I know that the Department of Public Works was in negotiation with Saul Centers for a couple, three months, which partly was part of the delay. But unfortunately, the ownership of the shopping center decided that they would not want to cooperate with the city, and it's going to force us to make the project more expensive in addition to causing delays. I just mention that because I think it's important to call out, when we don't get cooperation from private property owners such as big as Saul Centers, that could easily afford to acc... from private property owners such as big as Saul Centers that could easily afford to accommodate itself, because so many other of these shopping center owners do help us in so many different ways that go unmentioned. The Glen Side, the delay for the Glen Side sidewalk is just a routine delay, because it's taking a bit longer to get the design work done, and there's nothing there. That project seems to be going along. But the third one is that we're, in the HCD department section, carried forward $20,000 for the maintenance of New Hampshire Avenue green space. And I'm just curious if you have any more information of what that amounts to.
I don't. I'll have to find out.
Okay, if you could find out.
I'll get that back to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, all right. Will someone like to move this, the ordinance?
Yes, I'll move it.
Whoa, okay. Councilmember Siemens moved. Councilmember Mael, second. Any other discussion on this? No? Do we need a roll call vote on this one?
It's first reading.
First reading, so, all those in favor of the ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2018 budget amendment number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have to, do we need to vote to go into the Stormwater Management Board, or...
We have not typically.
Okay.
You have not typically.
All right. So then, we can just do now, the next voting item is the first reading ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2018 Stormwater Budget Amendment Number One. Would someone like to move that?
Don't move.
Councilmember Karashi was second.
Second.
Councilmember Mael, second. Any discussion or questions on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. We will move on now to the single reading ordinance awarding contract for construction of Ethan Allen Streetscape improvements. The city manager discussed that a bit while we were doing the budget amendments. Did you have anything else to add on that?
No. The lower, the lowest bid was responsive and responsible. We urge you to approve that.
Great. Any questions before I ask for this to be moved? All right. Who would like to move the single reading ordinance authorizing the contract for the construction of the Streetscape improvements proposed by Ethan Allen Gateway Project? Councilmember Schultz moved. Councilmember Siemens, second. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Since this is a single reading, you do roll call? Yeah.
Councilmember Kovaar?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Mael?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Now, on our consent agenda, it was requested to remove the item on the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for services with Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington for food pantry program. We will move that first, and then move on to our consent agenda items, so...
I will recuse myself from that.
Councilmember Siemens is recusing himself, so do I have someone who would like to move that ordinance?
Don't move.
Councilmember Karashi, do I have a second? Councilmember Mael, any discussion or comment? No? All right, since this is a single reading ordinance, you're going to do the roll call?
Councilmember Kovaar?
Aye.
Councilmember Mael?
Yes.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
No.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye. All right. Someone want to grab our colleague? Now, we'll move the consent agenda. The consent agenda has a single reading ordinance awarding contract for services with EduCare for a food pantry program, and a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of IT server equipment, software, and installation. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Councilmember Schultz. Because there are single reading ordinances, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Kovaar?
Aye.
Councilmember Mael?
Aye.
Councilmember Karashi?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. We're done with our voting items, and now we'll move forward to the presentations of development partner proposals for the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. Let me just grab that item. All right. As a reminder, on June 21st, the City Council had a preliminary review of the submissions that we received in response to our solicitation for letters of interest from potential partners for the redevelopment of the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. Following the discussion of the process and the potential role of the city in the development of the anticipated project, the council expressed an interest in meeting with representatives of four of the five respondents. So, invitations were sent out, and we're glad everyone was able to meet this evening and come present. The way we're going to run this work session is that each of the firms will have, presenters will have five minutes to present highlights from regarding their expertise, their overview of past projects, and we are also asked them to provide preliminary thoughts on their role in the desired partnership, and to be prepared to discuss what financing options. After the five-minute presentation, we will have 10 minutes for each group to respond to questions asked by the council. And so, for each group, we'll have about 15 minutes. And we're going to try and stick to that tonight, so that everyone can get through their presentations, and no one is stuck being here at midnight and being the last group to go. So, we are going to start now with the Coalition Homes, and the Orlo Fund is going to be the first group, so if you all want to come down here, and I believe the PowerPoint's all loaded up. Oh, that was, sorry. Here's your second.
Now you're on.
Now you're good.
Now?
Yes.
Yes? This works?
It does.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, and City Council members for inviting us to present to you this evening. Before we start, I'd like to introduce myself, and Jeff will introduce himself. I am Debbie Fotiades. I'm the Director of Coalition Homes. Coalition Homes is the real estate, property acquisition, development, and management affiliate of the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless. Have been in business for 27 years, and we are privileged and delighted to be here tonight.
My name is Jeffrey Shenensky. I'm the Director of Acquisitions for Orlo. We own and operate multifamily in the area, and we're delighted to be here tonight.
I am going to take the admonition of being concise and brief, although, given my heritage, that is, that is difficult to do. We put together a very short overview, presuming that we would spend most of the time answering questions that were of most import to you. So, we'll just quickly go through an overview of what it was that we had originally submitted. Our goal, when we put this project together, was to modernize the recreation center, to create affordable housing, and to complete the project at zero or limited cost to the city. Those, to us, were our three key objectives of how we went ahead to look at developing our conceptual schematic for this project. In doing that, we created value for the property. Jeff is going to be far more explanatory about that in a few moments. But we basically looked to develop an income-producing asset on the property that you currently own. That asset, and income-producing, would offset a new relocated 10,000-square-foot recreation center. We would then be able to provide a maximum of 200 apartments serving a general weighted average of residents, bringing in about $1 million additional to the city's tax base on an annual basis. That, our proposal highlights that the city of Tacona Park would own outright a modern 10,000-square-foot recreation center at no cost to themselves, a de minimis cost, depending on the fit-out that one would look for. We, the affordable housing units that we are looking to do, we're looking to follow best practices. It is my business, it is what we do, to develop housing for those who are the most vulnerable, to develop housing for those who can integrate with others in, within the community, coming from all income levels, coming from all avenues, and it is one of our most exceptionally strong components. Forty of these units are specifically designated for those who are most vulnerable in the population. We, as the highlights of that, we will add $1 million to the annual tax base and the entire project at little or no value. So, who we are, we are a unique partnership. We were laughing together at lunch today. I'm not going to go through the slide, but I will say that this partnership of a for-profit developer who is in the business, in a for-profit business, who is economically driven to make sure that the project is not only short-term viable, but long-term sustainable. We are in the business of, we are the only business, I would say, in Montgomery County whose sole mission is to provide permanent supportive housing for those who are most vulnerable. That combination of both of ours has led us to some feisty, and I'm sure will continue to be feisty, conversations going forward. I think we'll end up getting a really fine integrated progress. Our partnership with you is, we could say a whole lot of things. It's mostly communication, communication, communication. We are both amazingly responsive, both to our stakeholders within our companies. It's what drives us. We would expect to have a pretty significant engagement. Jeff's your next-door neighbor.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight, and I commend you on your stamina. I didn't realize how many things go across your desk, and you don't need my commendment, but commendable. I'll try to make three really quick points. Number one, we are the next-door neighbor of this property in question, literally next-door, and nothing would make us happier than to wake up in the morning and have a brand-new rec center right next to our property. Our residents would be thrilled, we would be thrilled. I looked very carefully at the, someone recorded very nicely and sent out a video of the last discussion the council had on this topic, and what became very clear is, what will take this whole discussion from potential to reality is funding. And what we did is, what we do every day, we look at a piece of land, and we see, how can you get value out of that piece of land? And our approach was simply, funds need, don't come out of thin air. This has to be a viable project. How do we make it happen? So, we, what we figured out is that if we maximize every inch of space on the current site to become an income-producing asset, it will attract private capital, and part of that equity raise can completely offset the cost of your new amenity center. That's why our model is what it is of moving the rec center. It's not, we have nothing against the site, we love it there, but just from a financial feasibility standpoint, we know that if we maximize every inch of this to become income-producing, it will offset the cost of the rec center. You will get a building that allows for affordable housing, cares for vulnerable population, and really is a side benefit of bringing 200 units into a community. You just get a tax base of, you know, do the math, if people are making an average of $60,000 a year, plus or minus weighted average, you figure about 10% goes to the tax base, you just brought in $1 million into the city, county, into that public stream. So, that's good news. Two other quick points about just being your neighbor. We have a very personal interest in the success of this property. No one wants to see a big construction site laying forever on the side of New Hampshire Avenue, and we don't want to see it in the front of our building. So, if we're involved in this project, besides being your partner for the project, for our own personal selfish interest, we need to see this through in the most economical and expeditious fashion possible. And just another quick note about being the neighbor, this is going to be tricky to brainstorm and figure out exactly how to capitalize on the land, how to make it most valuable, and whatever's built there is going to need parking. There's an issue with parking at our site, and whatever's built there would clearly need parking. Some of the proposals we saw that were already developed by the studies the city had entertained underground parking. And just a quick example, an underground parking space will cost you approximately $25,000 of space to construct. An overground parking space will cost you approximately $15,000 of space to build. So, that's a savings of $10,000 a spot. Because we have the property next door, instead of building underground parking here, if we move a structure a few feet over to our land, we could accommodate parking for our site, we could accommodate parking for the rec center, at a savings of, you know, 100 spaces, $10,000 a pop, that's $1 million off a project. And in a capital-constrained environment, which we understand, saving $1 million is a very important thing. So, what we bring to the table is, every day, we brainstorm, we think out of the box how to make value out of land. You have a piece of land, and we believe the ultimate success in this project is by the group figuring out how to get the most value out of that land.
I want you to know I'm, I'm the talker here.
And just in the end, we want to conclude...
You have to say this.
We urge you, if you don't pick us, think big, think value, think out of the box. You have a piece of land, please don't just redevelop what's there. There's a lot of potential, and if we're creative, I believe we could come up with a very viable and financially sustainable option.
Great, thank you. I have two questions to start us off. One is, if we follow through with the idea of moving the rec center off-site, can you talk a little bit about how would we guarantee we would end up with a rec center? And I know in your proposal, you had a couple of options of where to move it. Can you just talk a little bit about that? Because I think there's probably some concern about, at the end of the day, then losing the recreation aspect.
So, I think we do this in tandem. We certainly don't do this after the fact. In fact, you know, the planning part of the development, of course, is always the most complicated, the one everybody shies away from, because people want to see the shovel in the ground. We, the three sites we identified were identified by Recreation of Parks. There are others, we tried to stay within walking distance, within a mile, a couple of six months, where we're really not, whatever site works best for the group. We would, once we have an agreement to work as partners with the city, we would actually acquire that property, and we would work to develop that property, not necessarily, I think Jeff and I were talking about earlier, to move people in before we started construction here.
We have different ways of saying similar things. The bottom line on our end is that, I love the dating example at the end of your, whoever brought it up at the last meeting. Whoever you choose, you're going to have to date for a little bit and then begin a process. No one's being awarded a, you know, development proposal, whatever it's called. We believe that the best route here is to go, we're ready to date. We want to get together, we want to brainstorm on ideas, and part of that process, we will obviously have to lock in a price and a site. I mean, you can't go further with us, it's a risk. I mean, we don't have the site purchased, but in a short, hopefully in a speed dating process, we're identifying by the land.
Great. And the other question I had is, if you could talk a little bit more about supportive housing for most vulnerable, just so, I think, just a short description, so people who are listening understand what you're talking about for that, and how that's different than just talking about affordable housing.
Right. So, we envision all types, fair market, affordable, and vulnerable supportive housing in this environment. So, supporting...
Excuse me, it might be helpful if we move over to the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Did you hear originally?
Yeah.
So, we envision all three, market, affordable, and supportive housing, permanent supportive housing for the most vulnerable. So, permanent supportive housing for the most vulnerable, the homes are the same. The homes are not identified differently. So, out of these 200 units, 40 throughout, wherever they may be, some on one floor, some on another, they're the same. The general public, somebody visiting, the respect shown to these individuals is identical. But the support network for the individuals, whether it be, we provide at the moment, depending on, if you have a medical disability, then we will, then we actually provide case management to support the medical disability. If you have a mental disability, if you have a developmental disability, there's case management services, support services. We have a very strong, frankly, MCCH provides 60% of most of the shelter, emergency shelter and crisis management for Montgomery County, and over 40% of the permanent supportive housing throughout Montgomery County. So, we have 156 case managers, I believe, of our own at the moment. So we have 156 case managers, I believe, of our own at the moment, and we provide these services. Some clients and some tenants require weekly check-ins, weekly intervention, some require monthly check-in and intervention. All of these tenants provide very robust property management support and sufficiencies. They also all pay rent, as all of you know, vulnerable homes and supportive housing, but they pay 30% of what they earn. Sometime that $35 a month to them is as important as $3,000 a month to someone else. And so we work with them on a monthly basis as well to pay on time, to be good stewards, to be good tenants. They have to abide by the same leases, but they're taken to doctor's appointments. There's a whole host of structure. We are talking with HHS, though. We would probably enter into a contract with HHS to support both our case management and other case management that we don't provide.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Schultz?
Following up on Mayor Stewart's first question, by building on this site and with the housing idea, you would be building a rec center within walking distance, to quote your words, but, you know, a half-mile or so. Would that, and then the concern that was expressed was, well, how do we know that we'll get the rec center at the end? And your reply was, well, they'd be done in tandem. I'm wondering if you, because one of my big concerns is what happens to recreation programs when we tear down the existing rec center to build a new one on that site? If we build another, a new one at a different site along nearby, would that mean that you could move, build a rec center first, and I'm not asking you to commit to anything, I'm just exploring ideas here, before you actually then tear down the existing rec center to build the 200-unit affordable housing project?
I think it's a reasonable, more than reasonable discussion to do a phased development. We have to acquire our financing for the entire package. We're looking at this as one total project, the acquisition of the new site, the development and building and construction of the rec center on the new site, the demolishment, development, and build-out of the existing site of the new apartment buildings. It's one, one key project. I think we, once we all have our appropriate zonings, our contracts, our so on and so forth that we all require, I think phasing it in so that you're not left, I think is a serious discussion point that the city would ask for.
I actually think that's a fantastic idea, and I wish I would have put it as a bullet point in our presentation. That's a great idea. We could stage it, so there's no loss to programming.
Yeah, that's critical, but I'll have a follow-up question later, if there's time.
We're going fast tonight. Councilmember Kovar?
Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you for the presentation. Can you just tell us what the current area median income is in the area, so we have a sense for what we're talking about?
Last I saw it was $109,000.
Okay. And so then you talked about the weighted average or something like that. So what would the breakdown, and again, I'm not asking you to commit to a specific breakdown, but what's your sense for what the breakdown of all the 200 units, how that would look?
Oh, so let me clarify. When we threw out that 60 number, that was to get a general sense of how much tax income would come into the system. So assuming generally a weighted average of people in the county would come out in the 60% income, based on what we know from our building that we own, that's the general income base, you get to a certain number. This building would be different. This building would have, let's say we're talking about right now 200 units, so of those 200 units, you have 200 that would serve the very vulnerable population.
Close, but that would be great, but 40, actually. You said 200, but.
No, 200 total, and then of the 200, you would have 20 in her program, 40 in a different program of different stages, of 50% of AMI, 60% of AMI, and there's models for these mixed-income buildings that exist. We're not going to recreate the wheel. We have them in some of our buildings. We'll copy a model that works.
Yeah, so, you know, he missed the, he couldn't find my office, he missed the first 10 minutes, but when we were meeting with the Housing Department earlier, we actually thought through. I mean, there are going to be significant clients who bring in no income, and there are going to be other tenants who are, you know, are at the medium of 100 and some. So there were a lot of machinations of, no matter how we looked at it, but however we got there, we came up with an average medium of 60,000.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Interesting project. How did you guys come up with the number of 200 units?
How'd you come up with the number of 200?
We paid an architecture firm to do a quick study.
So if you could get an exemption and have more density by increasing the number of affordable units, because that's like the biggest issue for our region, would that be something you guys would consider?
100%. I like exactly how you're thinking, and that's something that we'd like to partner with the city, with the council, to figure out, can we get more density, which will bring us more value and make this whole project that much more feasible?
Great. Will a community room be part of the project?
In fact, in our original presentation, I mean, I think you see we are designated open community space, outside community space, inside, shared community space, and group space. I think there was an exercise room. I mean, it's a, this is going to be a really nice place.
The short answer is, there will be amenities in the building that we create, and it'll be discussion through our partnership to figure out what will be open, what will not be open.
And finally, will you request any money from the county to help this project go forward?
So I want to be really, really clear about that, because I know that that's on your minds. What we will need, we can raise, ballpark 25% of the equity for this project, we're envisioning a couple of million, we can certainly put together 12, 15 million, not a problem. We're going to borrow the rest, we're going to finance it, there's people finance construction loans all the time. We will definitely need to dip into low-income tax credits, all those kind of programs that I don't think necessarily come out of the city funds, but we certainly will need your support in getting a pilot program, you know, like that kind of stuff, to just help cut costs or make it more affordable.
On the vulnerable, on those for the most vulnerable, we have had conversations with, oh, thank you, thank you, sorry, for the 20%, for the 40, for those for the most vulnerable, we have been in conversations with the county and have gotten positive support to be able to provide our part for those condominiums. We would own them, we would, they would be permanent homes for the most vulnerable, and we have gotten positive reception from the city, or from the county to move forward with this partnership.
And I lied, one more question. In your unit mix, have you guys thought about three unit, or three-bedroom apartments?
Ah, the mix of size?
There's a mix on the, in our presentation, it's a mix of ones, twos, and threes, but again, that's something that we would do in discussion, really understanding the need and outfitting whatever the most need is.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. If councilmembers have other questions, I'm sure we can know where to find you and can email them, and we appreciate you coming tonight, and thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Community Preservation Development Corporation, CPDC. I think those mics are on, or they will be. But I think you need to do, if you're going to do the presentation, I think you need to do it from the podium.
Good evening, members of City Council. Thank you for inviting CPDC to present the seat. My name is Chris Lopiano, I'm Senior Vice President for Real Estate for Community Preservation and Development Corporation. CPDC is a not-for-profit affordable housing developer. We are a highly-regarded developer in this region. I don't just say that, in 2016, HAND, which is the trade association for not-for-profits and affordable housing developers in the region, selected us as Developer of the Year in their highest award. We've received numerous other awards. We've been in business for 27 years. We serve St. Maryland, District of Columbia, and Northern Virginia, as well as some other parts of Virginia. And our mission is to develop vibrant communities through innovations and partnerships, and we think that this project is an excellent opportunity to prosecute that mission. CPDC, over those 27 years, has developed more than 6,000 affordable apartments. We currently own and operate more than 5,000 affordable apartments in the region. That is comprised of 30 communities serving over 10,000 residents, and it has an approximate investment value of $700 million. We are experts in the low-income housing tax credit program, and we have developed family housing, senior housing, mixed income, and mixed-use housing. But the most important part of our corporation, of our mission, is not the real estate aspects. The most, the greatest number of our staff and the largest portion of our budget is devoted to working with residents through our Community Impact Strategies Group, providing services and programs. If we are selected, oh, they want me to mention that our offices are in Silver Spring. If we are selected, we would go into a process, go back. Doesn't want to go, there you go. We would first negotiate with the city, the development agreement. This agreement would define the roles of CPDC and of the City of Tacoma Park. It would determine the financing structure we would agree to move forward with, and the makeup of the development team, who would be the engineer, who would be the architect, who would be the lender, and so on. Once that was in place, we would go to the most important phase of this project, which is the community engagement phase of the project. We have great expertise in this area. We engage all of our residents at all of our properties, we are engaged with our residents, we have working models on how to stimulate that engagement, but we also have engaged with communities when we do projects. We just finished a project in, not finished a project, finished a engagement process in Richmond, which would be similar to what we're proposing here, a charrette process, where we had a series of three charrettes, starting with a piece of vacant land, and ending up with a proposal for the development of that land that had full community support, and which is now, we are now in the financing stages of. After the charrette process, we'd come back to the city, we'd review what we learned, what the goals and the outcomes of that charrette process were, come up with a final plan, and then submit that final plan for development approval with the city. Then we'd move into redevelopment, which is the balance of the design work, securing the financing, and getting the building permits, and then finally, we would construct the housing and the new rec center. The vision we have for this site is, that sort of, back, has sort of three pieces to it. One is the development partnership with the city. We think this is a very important part of the project, and one that we feel we have, we bring a good deal of experience with. We have partnered with many governments over our time to develop, in partnership to develop projects, DC Housing Authority, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, where we just finished 130-unit project, we just had the ribbon cutting a few months ago in West Baltimore, a very successful project in which HABC was our partner. The City of Annapolis, which you'll be hearing more about that project later from my associate, Pamela Lyons, and the Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority, which are actively now, we just finished one project with them, and we're about to start two more projects with them. We're happy to provide references from any of these entities, so you can understand firsthand from them how these partnerships have worked out. The vision we have for the site is a mixed-income, mixed-use project, so a 20,000-square-foot state-of-the-art rec center, and four stories of residential, 70 to 80 units. Those units would be mixed-income, affordable. I want to be clear about this, these would be a range of affordability, it's a range of rents from 30% AMI through 80% of AMI, but all affordable. We're, you know, have, you'll see a slide that has, you know, just a very basic concept of how this would proceed. And then finally, the financing. And the financing would be centered on low-income housing tax credit equity through that program, a first mortgage, layered financing, soft subordinate debt from the state and the county would be our goal or our target, and we do this all the time. We have many projects in Maryland and DC, Virginia, where we have these layers of financing. And then finally, the value of the land. And the way we are proposing to structure the value of the land is to, we have a five-story building, one story is the rec center, four stories is the residential. And so we would ask the city to contribute 20% of the value of the land, that value of the land that's associated with the rec center, contribute that. And then the other 80%, rather than finance it with mortgage debt, we would ask the city to take back a mortgage for that 80% of value of the land. That mortgage would entitle you to cash flow and the cash flow waterfall, and we think this is a good way of getting the value out of the land without burdening the project with more must-pay debt and getting cash to the City of Tacoma Park. The trickier piece, the piece where we need your help with, we can't really propose what it is, is the construction cost related to the rec center itself. Now, that can either be handled with, you know, capital from the city or elsewhere, but a capital contribution that covers the amount, we think that cost is $4 to $5 million. Or if the City of Tacoma Park has a sufficiently strong credit rating, we could sign a lease for that rec center, and you can make lease payments, we could take that lease that has credit to it and borrow against that to cover the cost of the development. Or you could do a combo, where there's some capital and some lease coming in. The cash flow that comes back to you from the contribution of the land or from the seller takeback could serve to defray the costs of that lease. Okay, real quickly, this is, you know, it's a parking garage, that's the first top-left-hand corner. That gets masked and surrounded by 20,000-square-foot rec center with a two-story gymnasium, and then on top of that structure are four stories of affordable, 70, 80 units. The reason we chose that, how we got to that number of units, is we kept this in a wood-frame construction. Our experience tells us that it's very difficult and requires a lot of subsidy to produce affordable housing in a steel and concrete building. It can be done, but it takes a lot of subsidy. Wood frame is a lower-cost construction, and that's why we're proposing this. I'd now like to turn this over to my colleague Pamela Lyons, who runs our Community Impact Strategies, and she's going to talk about a project in Annapolis that has some similarities to this project.
Good evening. My name again is Pamela Lyons, I'm Senior Vice President of Community Impact Strategies at Community Preservation and Development Corporation, where it is my responsibility to provide our brand of resident services, which includes both programs, partnerships, and activities that serve the needs, interests, and priorities of the residents who live both in the housing and the surrounding community. Ours is an asset-based community development approach that includes partnerships and certainly, and feedback from residents about what's needed in the community, along with the provision of services and their own interest in leading activities in the community. Again, we're focused specifically in five different areas, and that would be resident engagement, economic development, health and wellness, education, and green living. Next slide. An example of the kind of work that we've done in this area is a project in Annapolis that is Wiley H. Bates. Wiley H. Bates was born to, born into slavery and became an entrepreneur in Annapolis. He used $500 to purchase the land that became the first African-American high school in, during segregation in the '60s. When segregation ended, that high school became an African-American middle school through the mid-1966, and ultimately was closed in 1981 because it was horribly deteriorated. CPDC partnered with the Anne Arundel County Community Services. CPDC partnered with the Anarundel County Community Services and was able to, through multiple partnerships, create 71 units of affordable senior housing. Also in that space was created through the Office on Disability and Aging, a thriving senior center that included activities for, that were exercise-based, art-based, there are music activities for seniors in the community, health and wellness programs and activities, cooking and nutrition classes for seniors. At the other end of that building is the Boys and Girls Club of Anarundel County. And what we're pleased and excited about is the achievement of a multi-generational, multilingual, multicultural community that serves not just the residents who live there, but the residents in the broader community through partnerships from Anarundel Medical Center to Anarundel Community College, and local retailers who provide resources for residents who live in the community. We hope to extend that kind of and level of engagement in this project as well. Again, we have extensive experience in the area of engagement and community involvement.
And we are excited about having a 20,000-square-foot rec center as part of our building and the multitude of opportunity that provides for partnership and synergy.
Great. Turn it over to council questions now? Anyone on the City Council have? Councilmember Schultz?
Just, I followed your financing model pretty clearly, and appreciate that. So, let me just ask you some simple questions about that. A first mortgage would come from, say, just a commercial lender or gather?
Yes, it would be, you know, depending on what we have in our financial pro forma that we did to prepare for this presentation, this proposal, we proposed in our model FHA-insured loan, which we've done a lot of. It gives you a longer amortization period and a lower interest rate, and allows you to borrow more.
Okay.
But that would still be through a lender. You know, it might be through Bank of America, it might be through Red Capital, it might be through Prudential, but it's an FHA-insured loan.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you talk about, you mentioned subordinate loans, plural. Can you give us an idea of what that?
Sure. So, we've got a property just not far from here in Silver Spring called Park Montgomery. It's on University and Piney Branch, essentially.
Okay.
And that has both a county loan and a state loan. They're soft subordinate. The state loan is ahead of the county loan. The state loan's about twice the county loan. They totaled about $3 million. They're roughly $2 million and $1 million when we did that project 15 years ago. It's existing programs that the state has, existing programs that the county has for this kind of financing. You would have two ways to do the tax credits on a project like this. One is the competitive portion of the program, which is called the 9%, because it's a 9% tax credit. It's highly competitive, and we would go after it for this project.
Right.
But we wouldn't be guaranteed of winning it. And if we didn't, we would use the 4%, which is the non-competitive portion. We underwrote this with the 4% because that's less generous, so we had to make sure we could make this work if we didn't get the 9%.
Okay.
With that 4% credit, there's a program in the State of Maryland called the Governor's Rental Housing Works Program that's tailored to be used with the 4% credit, and provides soft financing of up to $2 million for these kinds of projects.
When you say "soft," does that mean?
It's not must-pay. It's cash flow dependent. So, you have a payment you have to make, but you only have to make it to the extent that there's cash flow available.
I see. Okay. Thanks. Then, you talk about seller-take-backs. Seller-take-back financing would be premised on if we were to literally sell the piece of land?
Or ground lease it. I mean, we would assume that you'd want to ground lease this land.
Yeah.
It would still be evaluated the same way. You'd get an appraisal and say, "The land is worth this." And so, that's the value that the land would have, and we'd extract that value in this way.
Right.
Whether it's a ground lease or fee simple, that's the value.
Either way, it represents cash flow to the city.
Yeah.
Over, what, a period of maybe 20 years or something?
Over the period probably of the more, of the primary mortgage.
Mm-hmm. And that could be, what, 10, 15?
30, no, it's, well, if we do an FHA-insured, it'd be 35 years. If you did a standard, conventional, it'd be 30 years.
Yeah, I guess we'd want to look at the current value of that cash flow, sort of see what that might mean to us.
We took a swing at it, and, you know, I have no idea. At the end of the day, it could be worth twice this. It's hard to say just sitting at your desk, but we use some appraisals of properties that we own in the area. And, you know, we think that the, ultimately, you know, the land valuation would produce, in a lease situation, you know, 80% of the value of the land would produce roughly, with that a 5% interest rate on that piece over that amortization period, about $80,000 cash to the city.
Per annum.
Per annum.
Yeah.
And we think that the, you know, if we entered into a lease with you for 30 years, you know, at, over that period to, and use that lease to leverage the cash needed to pay for the rec center, that's going to be just shy of a $300,000 annual lease. Then you offset the 80-year down at around about a $220,000 annual lease for the rec center.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm very familiar with you guys. You own Essex House, which is in my ward. Would a pilot be required in your financing structure?
We don't have it built in to our financing. We do not. It would help. It would help the numbers for us, it would help the numbers for you, but we didn't presume that that was available.
Okay. In your example in Annapolis, the community space, was that financed, or did you use grants from the state to rehab that space? And who controls that space? The City of Annapolis, or do you guys through?
There are many spaces within the old-school structure, right? So, there's the senior center, there's the Police Boys and Girls Club. We also have a community room in our 71-unit residential building. There's also library rooms, there's computer rooms. I mean, there's many amenity spaces within our 71-unit building. The Police Boys and Girls Club occupy the former gymnasium. I wasn't here when that project was done, so I'm not quite sure how those costs were covered. I imagine that the county brought money for the senior center.
They did.
They did. And, you know, the Police Boys Club, was that part of our project?
That was part of our project.
So, we managed to pay for the renovation of the gymnasium for the Police Boys and Girls Club. There's also, interestingly enough, a museum here, the Heritage or Legacy Center, which shows the legacy of the Wiley Bates School, and is a museum of the days of segregated education, if you will.
And who controls the museum? Is that the state?
They have a not-for-profit that--
That operates the museum?
That operates the museum. It's within our residential, and so they nominally lease it back from us for, you know, $10 or something, but it's--
Okay. Now, for the rec center, community center, whatever you want to call it, usage by the tenants, how would we work that out? I mean, would we, they have to pay a fee, or does, just because it's a Tacoma Park--
However, however you run rec centers, they would just be the same as any other citizen of Tacoma Park.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
What we would see there, though, is we would recruit partners to provide programs and services for our residents, and we would see a synergy there, particularly for our family-sized units where there's children in them, where we could work together with the rec center to provide a very rich programming.
In your parking structure, would that be free, or is that paid parking?
Well, we haven't got to that level of detail. Typically, it's free to the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman McCullough?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. Just one question. I assume the relative size of the rec center versus the, where the units are can vary. If you have a smaller rec center, you could have more units. In theory, where does the 20,000 square feet come from? I don't remember what the current, what the square footage of the current place is, but I'm just wondering.
The current is 10.
Yeah, so what, I mean, is it just because you want to provide more, or does that somehow make the project work better, or what?
So, allow me to introduce myself. I'm Troy Rogerman with Winsec and Associates Architects and Planners.
I don't think that's on--
Is it on?
I don't think so.
No, I'm sorry. My name is Troy Rogerman, and I'm with Winsec and Associates Architects and Planners, and we were involved, we authored the study, the initial zoning study on this site, and I was personally part of that study as well, and in discussions with the planning department just to explore options on the site and at the conceptual level. A 20,000-square-foot rec center was kind of the starting point. Now, whether that goes up or down is a whole other exploration with the city, but rec centers, providing a significant amount of amenity and a large gymnasium component, typically fall somewhere in that range. They can also go easily upwards of 35,000 square feet as well, but that, we thought, was a good starting point. Just to make a quick note, if you reduce the size of the rec center, you may not necessarily see an increase in the residential component. The way we laid out the residential component, just as a test fit here, just as a conceptual study, was to use a 60-foot depth bar and kind of put that on top of the rec center, but we distinctly separated the two structures. Really, part of the lending requirements often require certain separations between the spaces, and that was one of them, so it's very flexible. This is just a very preliminary exploration.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next group will be Mission First Housing Development Corporation. Oh, do we pull up? Sorry about that.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Elizabeth Everhart. I'm a Senior Development Manager with Mission First Housing Group. I also have a couple of partners here with me. If you want to introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. This evening, my name is Dana Henson. I'm the Vice President of the Henson Development Company.
Hi there.
My name is Fernando Bonilla. I'm with Soto Architecture.
So, we actually just responded to the RFQ. As compared to the other teams, we did not present a proposal. We took the city at its word that we would be working with the community and with the city to come to a proposed plan. So, I'm just going to talk about our team, our past projects, the role that we think the developer would play, and some of the financing options we would see. Here is our team. I'll just run through us individually. Mission First Housing Group, we would be the lead developer. We're based here in D.C. and have been active since 2001. We've completed over 1,300 units in this area, have over 3,000 units on the East Coast. Really, our projects are all done in partnership with community-based institutions and local governments. Our goal is to create long-term, sustainable community assets. Both of these projects here are down at First and K Northwest, and we're done in partnership with Bible Way Church. The Henson Development Company that Dana is with is a Maryland MBE founded in 2000. They have success creating value through collaborative approaches, meaningful resident participation. They've done a lot of HOPE 6 work across the country. And Dan Henson, the founder of the firm, was the Housing Commissioner of Baltimore. Soto Architecture is a D.C.-based minority, small disadvantaged business enterprise. They've worked with us on numerous award-running projects, both Mission First and Henson, and have great expertise in urban infill, mixed-use, and multi-partner projects. Miller and Camby is our land use attorney that we're proposing. Jody Klein, we recently worked with on a project that we'll discuss here in Montgomery County. Harkins Builders would be our general contractor, and they have a diversified background based here in Maryland as well. JDC Construction, they help us ensure that our project's on time, on budget, and built per the plans and specs. They work on all of our affordable housing developments, and with many affordable housing developers in the area. They also are currently the construction manager for D.C.'s schools and rec centers, being done by the Department of General Services. So, example projects, Mount Jesriol Senior Housing, we just broke ground at 420 University Boulevard. This is 75 units of senior housing, all affordable, in partnership with Mount Jesriol Baptist Church. We went through a special exception process led by Jody Klein, successfully to develop this site on the back half of the church. It was part of the mission of the congregation. We partnered with them. We're currently in construction, 13 months. Harkins is the contractor there as well, done in partnership also with the Henson Companies. Another project that we did with Henson was Fells Point Station. This was owned by the City of Baltimore, was a vacant parking lot and historic police station. We partnered with the city to create mixed-income housing with ground-floor retail. Very successful project. We use historic tax credits and a variety of other state and local programs. We did also have to go through an extensive land use process in the historic Fells Point neighborhood there. Another project recently done by Mission First is House of Lebanon. This was the redevelopment of a historic school in D.C. This is under a ground lease with the District of Columbia. We created 82 units of senior housing, all affordable, with extensive community space that has outdoor, outside programming as well for the community. So, really, we see the role of developers executing the vision of our partners in a collaborative way. We seek to serve a diverse, vulnerable population. Typically, our partners have a population they are seeking to assist, seniors, homeless, special needs, family, and we've vets. We've worked with all of those types of populations and would be open to finding out what the city and its population most seeks to serve. And we always look to engage local businesses and local hiring as part of our projects. So, financing, I think you've heard from the other developers, would be layered financing. We typically are always working with both public and private financing, something usually at the federal level, low-income housing tax credits, state through Maryland CDA, often rental housing works, soft financing. Mount Jesriol had county funds of $2 million through DCHA, and then we'd also look at having private lenders and investors, and possibly fundraising as well. And we're open to all types of options for purchaser or ground lease. And just a list here of recent financing partners, we have an excellent track record and excellent financials, so we command very competitive pricing from private lenders. So, thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I appreciate you guys being here.
Can you lay out your vision for the site, what you guys would like to see, how many units? Just, I know you haven't actually put together a proposal, but, you know, after you've heard from everybody, you've probably read some of the proposals online. What would you guys like to see?
I think that what we would like to see is definitely a mixed-use development. Ideally, there is some retail component. There are several of these examples where you mix the residential portion with a, with the recreation center, like a YMCA on W Street, for example, in the district, and they have a Sweet Green right next door, so you continue this idea of the wellness, not only in the way that the building is developed, but also the recreational center, as well as the type of, if there is a retail component or anything, that can also help and make it a vibrant community, a very inviting building from the, at the ground level.
Do you think you could shoehorn some retail into the site?
That is something that we will have to discuss, and I think that there is a, there is a little bit of not very well-served retail component in that area. You have the IHOP up the hill, but depending on how well-treated is the pedestrian level, I think that that could work.
Would you guys build a parking garage?
You know, certainly, we'd look to try and minimize the cost of the parking garage, but yes, we would have some sort of likely structured parking, whether tucked under the building or underground parking. Typically, in affordable housing, you don't charge for parking. That's considered part of the rent burden. So, we do always look at, you know, try to look at creative ways to deal with minimizing the parking costs. We look to house people, not cars.
That's good. I like that. Are you guys going to send us a proposal, or?
You know, based on the RFQ that was sent out, the next step would be to do outreach and collaboration with the city and the community before a proposal is really-- and collaboration with the city and the community before a proposal is really set. So, you know, that was how we approached the RFQ. And that is how we would, you know, choose to proceed, and as we understood that that would happen then before a development agreement was signed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Crashy.
Thank you all for being here, and for the folks who've already presented. You know, I think affordable housing is something that's very important to all of us up here. But right now, as it currently exists, this site functions as a very important recreational facility for members of our community who are generally underserved and reside along New Hampshire Avenue, which is not far from where I live, which is not considered the epicenter of Tacoma Park. People don't think of Tacoma Park when they think of this rec center. So from our perspective and how we envision this and hope that this marriage with whoever would work, you know, we'd like to bring this new development as being a new focal point of Tacoma Park, such that it can have a rippling effect along the entire New Hampshire Avenue corridor. But it remains, it must be said without question, that the rec center is a focal point there. We have a rec center director here, a rec department director here. So with respect to your organization, you've shown us a number of examples of work you've done in the area. How many of those, if any, had a component of a recreational facility to them? And I know, sir, you mentioned something about W Street, and I don't know if you all had a direct involvement in that, but that would be helpful, just to get some background. I know that this is not the proposal phase, but it's helpful to know what your experience is in this area.
Sure. So we've done many mixed-use projects, you know, with ground-floor retail and extensive community space. We have not done specifically a rec center. You know, many of our buildings, like I showed, House of Lebanon has 10,000 square feet, and we partner with outside organizations, like the local police have their meetings there. So, you know, we haven't had specifically a rec center, but creating these spaces and determining how to finance them and design them so that the building is secure and separate, but that those areas have access, you know, we've worked through all of those issues.
Let me speak just briefly. Can you hear me? I'm not sure.
I don't know if that one's on.
They changed.
Oh, did they?
The Henson Development Company, we've been in business for 17 years now, and the principal of the company was the Housing Commissioner and the Executive Director of the Housing Authority for Baltimore City. And as a part of that, our company, when he was the commissioner, as well as when our company was established, we actually won more HOPE-6 grants in the country than anyone else, and implemented a lot of HOPE-6s. I can't even count them. I want to say at least six to eight of them, and a couple in the district. As a part of that, that whole process, the Sure Ret process, working with the community, relocation efforts, self-sufficiency programs, and actually working with everyone to come up with a concise plan that addresses all of the needs of everyone in the community, was a part of all of our scope. Pleasant View Gardens, which was a HOPE-6 in Baltimore City, had a recreational center as a part of it. It's actually, it was the Muggsy Bogues Center, and it was the Carmelo Anthony Center, and now actually Under Armour is renovating it. So it's sustained itself over the course. So we had that. Currently, Mission First and I are part of a redevelopment effort in Baltimore City, which is the Old Town Mall, which was a very large community in Baltimore, which basically has been kind of vacant for quite some time. The Chick Web Recreation Center, which exists there now, is a small structure. We've been working very closely with Rec and Parks in Baltimore City and the City of Baltimore, and working with new designs on how that new center would be. So we've worked, we're working through the process. We've worked on centers before, but as part of our individual developments, currently we don't have one that we have, but we are familiar with the process and are actually working on one now.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah. I thank you for being here. The name Dan Henson is familiar to me, because I worked for the City of Baltimore back in the 1970s.
Okay.
In fact, the Old Town Mall was one of the first inner-city pedestrian malls ever built. And it was adjacent to the Gay Street Market.
Absolutely.
Which failed eventually and closed. That whole area's gone to heck, but isn't through any fault of the city or of the efforts that were made there. And so I went and looked at Dan, at the website for your company, and I'll just be brief to say that the innovation that Henson's company and his personal reputation is pretty astounding, certainly in the Baltimore area.
Thank you.
So I just want to compliment you on that. The question I have has to do with the extent to which you've done partnerships with small municipalities in terms of projects. I know you've done with a lot of nonprofits, you know, whose mission is to develop housings, like for a church that wants to develop housing for its members or similar sorts of things. But to what extent have you had involvement with municipalities, particularly, you know, small ones, not the City of Baltimore?
The Henson Development Company, we've actually worked with the City of Greensboro, the City of Winston-Salem. I personally was working actually with them on their HOPE-6 projects, consulting with them on their self-sufficiency programs, as well as helping them with implementing their HOPE-6 programs, because they needed some outside help. We also have a project, actually Mission First and Henson have a project in Tampa. We've developed a project there. We had a HOPE-6. So we have worked with some smaller municipalities and been successful in working with them. We actually did a redevelopment in Tampa of a HOPE-6, but it was a smaller HOPE-6 project there, and we're actually just transitioning out of it. But that actually did have a small community center and rec center as a part of it in a senior building.
When you were putting together your RFQ, did you have a chance to look at the site?
Yes.
Okay. Any impressions?
I mean, we think it's a fabulous opportunity, and we applaud the council for thinking of affordable housing on that site. And, you know, we want to both create value and a sustainable asset that'll cash flow and provide, you know, residents with long-term housing, as well as be able to provide the rec center. We think that's a great opportunity and a great vision, and we want to help and partner with the council and the community to make that happen.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mel.
Yeah. Thank you for being here. Sort of a couple of questions and comments. The first is on the recreation component. And there's this sort of quip typically associated with lawyers, where you see every problem as, you only have a hammer, you see every problem as a nail. As a city, you know, we see the services we provide, and so we tend to think of, well, what other, what way do we provide the same service? We have a government-provided rec service, so we think, well, what we need is, you know, a government-provided rec facility, but a newer, you know, better one. But one of you, for example, mentioned YMCA as an example of a rec service. So, you know, if you have ideas on alternative ways that we provide, you know, high-quality recreational features, particularly to a lower-income community or portion of the population, you know, all ears on that. It doesn't have to be, although I think my or maybe our default assumption going into this was that you end up with a recreation feature that is government-run. It doesn't have to be that model. So, you know, sort of welcome your follow-up on that. And then let me just sort of put my other comment out there, and I think you might have some initial ideas in this, but, you know, sort of also welcome your feedback afterwards, which is that we did an RFQ, and in my recollection of the process, we did that because we were basically just trying to figure out, is anyone even interested in this? Are we crazy to think that there's a viable project here? And so to some extent, it was really just the fact that you all applied was, yes, okay, we're not crazy, right? But then how do we get that to be more specific? How do we define what it is that we want? And how do we define, how do we together define what it is that makes the universe a viable potential projects? So how do we get to an RFP? What are the questions that you all believe the city needs to answer that really, it's really dependent on us deciding and narrowing the space in order for you all to put a good, you know, RFP proposal back to us? So there's sort of questions about, is it 50 units of housing? Is it 200 units of housing? Is it serving, you know, families, or is it serving individuals with special needs or disabilities? You know, so the rec features, the retail first-floor space, right? Those, I see, are fundamental questions where you all have enormous expertise in terms of understanding what would produce a valuable asset. But we also have a role to play in deciding, what is it that we think the community needs? What's the gamble that we want to take in terms of creating, you know, community? So the two parts of my question are, and they're, you know, maybe valuable to both respond now, but also to think about, follow up with us, is, you know, are there other options in terms of defining a rec asset? And then, you know, what do we really need to answer for you all to see this move forward? And just let me put one more thing out there, which is, we've got this other development process, there was a bit of a reference to it at the beginning from Councilmember Schultz, Tacoma Junction City-owned property, where we sort of solicited visions from developers of what they saw on the site, and then we moved forward. There's some, it's a totally different outcome at the end of the day in terms of the kind of project that would go in. But that, we had that sort of one experience of this. But there's definitely, you know, a need to figure out how to move forward. What are the best steps in terms of moving forward?
I'll take the first part. In terms of the rec center, I'll just give you an example. I'll use the Old Town example again, especially since you're a little familiar with it. Old Town Mall is, when we received the request for qualifications, same type of thing, we kind of got it and we looked at it, and we recognized immediately the massive opportunity that could take place, not just on what the city, the housing authority, was asking us for, but what we could do to bring about a great development. So we kind of responded to, you know, our qualifications, and then we basically presented and let them know that we saw a greater opportunity to not only develop on the site that they were looking at, but a much broader development, which would help rebuild that entire community, which is, like I said, pretty much vacant right now. And basically to redevelop it, and just to kind of give you a little familiarity, if you're familiar with Baltimore, it's in downtown Baltimore, not too far from City Hall. It kind of sits in between City Hall and Johns Hopkins Hospital, right smack dab in the middle. And one of the sites used to be a public housing development, which was torn down, and residents were relocated from it. And so we had kind of schools in the center of it, and we have some city health buildings in the middle of it. We have the rec center that's small and, you know, underutilized in the center. And so we kind of looked at it and said what we could do. The reason that the rec center with the YMCA came up, that whole concept, was we knew that we had the Chick Web Center, which was very small. It really wouldn't support the type of development and master plan that we were looking to put in place as far as expanding the development there. So we talked to the YMCA. We just kind of made a phone call, one of our partners, and said, would you be interested in partnering to create a new rec center that would support the new community? And then we brought in Rec and Parks, because we recognized that if we did that, the city provides rec services to all of the city residents for free right now. If you live in Baltimore City, any rec center that you go to in Baltimore City, you can go to it for free. Well, of course, that's not the model for the YMCA. So talks began on, well, how do you do that? How do you make that work? I say all of that to say that we are a development team, and whoever we partner with, we've worked with the city, any agencies, which we're working with, all of them in Baltimore right now on the Old Town redevelopment. If you mention an agency in Baltimore, we have either met with them or are going to meet with them in regards to the development. We work to meet the needs of the community. We work to meet the needs of what would serve that area and the residents. And in that particular case, a rec center, some type of partnership, city and private partnership, we knew would be most viable. And I think here, what we would need to do is really take a look at what makes the most sense for your community and for your residents. And I think that, you know, for us, it really is something that we look forward to as far as working with people, so that we can listen and not always just talk. And that's very important for us, is to listen to what it is that you need and what it is that you want, and then that helps us to put together the best plan.
And I think in many ways, working with nonprofit church partners, it's very similar. They have a vision, and they have a wish list that they present to us, and we help them flesh out, and then we say, well, what can we achieve in this project? You know, does the city want an Olympic-sized swimming pool with diving boards? You know, that's something that, if they do, then let's figure out how to make that happen. Maybe there are partners out there that are looking for that. So, you know, that's the kind of process that we're ready to embark on.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our last group tonight is MHP, Montgomery Housing Partnership.
As many of you know, my name's Robert Goldman. I'm president of Montgomery Housing Partnership, and we appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight. With me tonight is Artie Harris, my vice president of real estate, also resident of Tacoma Park. We got David Stempel and Logan Schutz from Grimmon Parker, the architectural firm. Oops. Okay, getting the hang of it. So that's some of our folks. So, you know, in terms of our team, you know, MHP has been part of the community for over 28 years. We have developed over 1,700 units in Montgomery County. You know, we really take a comprehensive approach to developing affordable housing, which we're not only housing people, and we clearly have a lot of experience with that, but we also see the important role of strength, empowering the residents that live at our properties through after-school programs and a lot of resident programs, which I'll talk about in a bit, as well as strengthening neighborhoods around where affordable housing is located. We own eight properties in Tacoma Park, including, which make up about 442 apartments. We are a green organization and very excited and honored to have been recognized nationally as the practitioner of the year from a national organization called Neighbor Works. This project, as, you know, as we see it and as we hear from, read from the RFQ, and as we understand the community, you know, obviously, the rec center part is very important, and we saw that as very critical to this. And so we felt it was important to bring together, as part of our team, an experienced set of architects that understand, have years of experience doing community centers, rec centers, cultural centers. And so we have Grimmon Parker, with 40 years of experience working in Montgomery County. They've developed over 25 rec centers, including 10 in Montgomery County, and as well as a substantial experience both in housing, affordable housing, mixed-use projects, with over 150 As you see, you know, our team has, you know, as we said, extensive experience with recreation centers and wellness centers. You see here just some of the projects that Grimmon Parker has worked on, and, you know, including the Mid-County Rec Center, White Oak Recreational Center, the exciting Wheaton Library and Community Rec Center, as well as the others that are listed here. You know, this is a niche area. This is an important part of this thing, and we felt it was important to have a part of our team that had years of experience being able to design this, because as I'm sure you knew in doing this rec center here, there's a lot that goes on, and a lot to think about as you put a rec center together. In addition, we experience, oops, with multifamily, doing affordable housing deals, mixed-use deals. You can see here from some of the experience Grimmon Parker's done. MHP, as I said, owns a number of properties in Tacoma Park. We're very excited, most recent development, the Bonafent in downtown Silver Spring. It's very similar to what we're doing here, dual-purpose. We are the first, really, first project in Montgomery County to have sort of dual-purpose public facilities on one site. So we have the Silver Spring Library next to the Bonafent, which has 149 senior apartments, affordable downtown Silver Spring, right next to, we hope, the Purple Line, as well as close to the as close to the Silver Spring Metro. We also, extensive experience, I'll go into in a minute, with community collaboration. As I said, we have a whole neighborhoods department that really focuses on working in the community, working in neighborhoods, working with residents. We have extensive experience also in resident services. As I said, that's an important part of our mission. We do extensive array of preschool programs, after school programs for elementary school kids, adult programs, computer classes, health promotion activities. As you know, we just did a mural at 7610 Maple. We, like you guys, on August 1st, will be out doing nights out at a few of our properties, getting the residents engaged in the community. We also have been involved in sport and health programs, doing soccer programs, swimming. We do robotics programs, STEM programs, extensive arts programs, really giving the kids and the parents a full array of experiences to empower them and to take advantage of opportunities going forward. We do this, some of our programs, like the preschool program and the after school program, we do ourselves. We also partner with other groups, for example, and we've worked with Impact Silver Spring, Carpe DM Arts, Arts on the Block. We're working right now with the YMCA, and so we have a number of partnerships and relationships in the community. And we see there's great opportunity to partner with what's the activities, what we do typically, partner with the rec center and really enhance the array of programming that you can have as part of this rec center. One of the other things I'll say, it's not part of the slide here, but also say that we have a lot of experience with sort of public-private partnerships, working with the county, working with local jurisdictions. As we said, the Bonafent, we also did a project called Only Springs, and Only, which was on county owned land. These are all very collaborative efforts in terms of figuring out, for example, the Bonafent went through a number of iterations in terms of number of units, the income mix, you know, seniors versus family, services, a wide array of efforts collaborating with the county and the community to figure out what the ultimate product would be. We're very proud that we work very closely with the Silver Spring Civic Association next to the Bonafent, a group that probably is very active and engaged on these, every development that goes on in downtown Silver Spring and doesn't always give their seal of approval, but we were very excited when we went, got to the planning board, they gave us their unfettered support. So that's part of our effort to engage the community. Here, talk about creative collaboration and community engagement. As I said, we have an extensive array of neighborhood staff that works in the community. We've been working for 17 years in the long branch community, which obviously you know combines parts of Silver Spring and Tacoma Park. We've worked with the Business League, worked with creating civic associations, neighborhood associations, to get residents engaged in their community. We're right now also working in Wheaton, just did a great beautification project two weekends ago, which we got a bunch of planters and residents, we're getting, filling planters and putting plants throughout the community. So it was a great activity. As part of our efforts, we, you know, obviously work closely with the city staff, with you guys, with potential, your recreation department, with community stakeholders, and to kind of get this project working. Part of our, just as part of MHP, a third of our board is made up of people from low income communities. We feel that that's important and to make sure that the community is heard in all the work that we do. Grimmon Parker has a very extensive process in terms of charrettes, working with the community, doing block, playing with blocks, playing with amassing, to get the community a sense of what's going to be built, and then has an extensive, exciting sort of technology that helps polling the community to best understand. Financing, very, you know, we have extensive experience putting these types of projects together, I think as other presenters talked about, involves low income housing tax credits, whether it's 9% or 4%, we have extensive experience with that. And we, you know, we also have just recently put a small community center, nothing to the extent of what you're talking about, but a small community center which received a state bond, we're able to help build a community center at one of our properties. As we looked, I think you had asked about potential sources of capital, we clearly think there's a lot of value potential, obviously from the land. There's, as people talk about possible sale, leaseback type arrangements, state bonds, as we said, we had experience doing, going through the bond process at the state just last year, county funds, CDVG, home, we have, you know, we've gotten very successful with getting grants from foundations locally. We have those relationships with all the local foundations, with donors, donors locally. We have, in terms of housing part of this, you know, mortgage debt would be the first debt on the property, as well as we look at either 9% or 4% tax credits, which would provide equity. And then we would look to soft funding, whether that's home, county grants, look for a county, possibly a county tax pilot. And, you know, we also have sources like Neighbor Works and other folks who are very creative about sort of layering different sources of capital and funding to make these projects work. I guess I'll conclude by just saying that we're here locally, you know, we've been at this for 28 years. As I said, from my staff that lives in Tacoma Park, from me coaching soccer at the Tacoma Park Soccer League, to board members who are part of the city of Tacoma Park, to extensive relationships and experience working with the planning staff, to working with the council, you guys in the room, nonprofits locally in the community, we do tours of our properties in Tacoma Park and gotten to know a number of the residents here in Tacoma Park. You know, at the end of the day, this is a complex project, and there are going to be hiccups along the way. And what's important, I found in doing this, is knowing who you can pick up the phone and talk to and smooth these things over and make things work. And I think that's what, one of the things that we really bring to the table for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Comments? No, we're done? Councilmember Mayall?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, in the first presentation, you all heard the partners talk about doing this at zero or de minimis cost for the city. Do you see that same sort of possibility as being an option in terms of financing? Not for continuing, you know, operations, but for construction?
I mean, clearly those are possibilities, absolutely possibilities. I think some of the, I think the wild card, a couple of wild cards. One, I think is sort of how extensive and how expensive a community center you want. And so the, you know, and so those are things you have to work through. But I think it's definitely doable and things that were already suggested in terms of, you know, leasing back and generating income or other things, we, as I talked about, bonds, but I definitely think it's doable. One of the things actually I didn't mention, and I guess one of the benefits of us being here locally, is we've already begun to help your project without you even knowing it. In terms of our things that we do, we're very involved in advocacy. We advocate for affordable housing all the time. We were here when you had your summit on affordable housing, and we appreciate the leadership you guys took on that. So one of the things we advocated for, and something we'll have to explore, is that in CR zones like this, the, when you do affordable housing, we were able to get a change in the law to allow, this goes to Councilmember Smith, your question earlier tonight about going higher and higher density. That is the potential here. Now, how much and whether that's enough? You know, one, is a community going to accept higher heights and bigger density? Those are things we have to figure out. Is it enough that it would provide extra value and therefore create more value for the rec center? Those are things we have to explore. I don't know, we know that today. And part of that is, as well as, this is a new portion of the law, and the park and planning staff is, we've already presented them one project like this and they've actually accepted it. And, but now, you know, we'll have to see, you know, to what extent and how much density they would permit, and whether that makes it more economically to go to a higher density. Like was mentioned before, you have to think about wood frame and the economics of that versus how much higher can you go in terms of high rise?
Great. Any other questions or comments? No? I think, thank you for going last.
Thank you very much. Not a problem.
We appreciate it.
We're used to being at community meetings.
Yep. We appreciate it. All right. So moving forward, I would ask my council colleagues that if you have any questions for the folks who presented this evening, that you circulate them among the full council and then we'll compile them and send them over to the staff. So that way, we keep all the questions in one place, we are not asking duplative questions, and then we can have everyone answer the same set of questions and receive information back. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks, and we are tentatively scheduled to come back and have more of a discussion on this on July 26th before we go to recess. So, all right. So that's it for that work session tonight. Now I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Smith to discuss MML legislative action requests.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how much the council remembers, but this is an annual event. We have to, well, we should submit legislative action requests, LARs, to the MML's, gosh, Legislative Committee. And they will, the committee will review the requests, they will be voted on by members of the committee, and that is how MML decides what it will be our legislative priorities for the entire state. So, many of you know that Tacoma Park has been a leader in establishing different priorities for the league. Last year, our proposal to increase the relationship and types of notification with utilities and State Highway Administration was rolled into a committee that I chaired. That turned into a roundtable at this most recent conference at Ocean City. The league believes that is something that is going to happen every year, and we will probably have another roundtable at the winter conference. Plus, WSSC and Washington Gas have been kind enough to give us their project schedules for the year, and all the municipalities that use those two utilities are able to tap into that information. So, I've talked to Councilmember Mayall about one proposal, and I think Councilmember Mayall would be the best person to talk about it more. But I do have another potential, and I think we should only submit three LARs, because we don't want to bog down the committee. And the other one is a piece of legislation that was passed last year by Delegate Alonzo Washington of Prince George's County. It was to create an economic development fund, but the governor has not put any money into the fund. And what is unique about this fund here, bear with me, I'm going to bring it up and actually tell you what it would give us. And I think this is something that the city could tap into for some of the projects that we're trying to do. This fund would allow us to tap into grants to assist in pre-development activities for commercial and residential development, including site acquisition, land assembly, architecture and engineering, and site development for revitalization in designated areas of the state. And Inside the Beltway would be one of those designated areas. So I think this would be a great opportunity for us. I think, of course, our colleagues in Prince George's County, who will of course be on the legislative committee, would also favor an LAR, that request funding for this economic development fund. So I would turn it over to Councilmember Mayall.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. The idea that Councilmember Smith brought to me and asked for some suggestions on regarded, regards the Paris Climate Agreement and what the state of Maryland could do, given the lack of action expected at the federal level now, what could Maryland do, what could MML do in terms of proposing action that would represent the state's efforts to legitimately implement that agreement, you know, barring federal action? So it's a complicated document, it's an aspirational document, but there are some specific things that are, that are components of the Paris Agreement that Maryland could act on. One obvious one, which we're already doing, is trying to lower net carbon emissions from different sectors. Maryland is a participant in an alliance of northeastern states that have basically a carbon cap of sorts and are trying to reduce the amount of carbon coming out. New Jersey Governor Chris Christie made news, in one of many ways he's made news recently, but about, he pulled out, they pulled out of that agreement, but it's called REGI, and Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, I think is the last word. So for example, Maryland has gotten, I think it was 170 million in contributions that have gone into the state coffers from that fund so far, they come from, largely from utilities. Maryland has done different things with that money than every other state. And I think the, in nonpartisan analysis, it'd say Maryland's used that money fairly ineffectively when it comes to climate change. Most states put most of that money into, for example, low income or business, energy efficiency upgrades, or, you know, renewable energy installation, solar panels, things that we're all familiar with from our programs. A lot of the Maryland money just goes to pay bills of people, not for any, not whether they're using solar panels or anything else, just basically energy bill assistance, which is a good thing for low income residents, you need bill assistance, but it doesn't do anything to change demand. It's the kind of thing that Pepco would like because it doesn't change how much power someone's purchasing from them. But that's an example where, you know, legislative direction in a bill to say, you know, more of this money, right now it's 55% of all Maryland's money has gone into just bill assistance. The next closest state I think is 10%, I think it's New Hampshire. You know, move 30% of future money, direct the governor to move 30% of future money into, you know, low income home or apartment building, energy retrofits, renewable energy. That's an example of sort of low hanging fruit that doesn't cost anything, that could represent, you know, action on the Paris Climate Agreement for Maryland. There's some other ideas as well, I won't take more time to describe here, but getting MML to embrace the idea of state legislation that pushes the state on climate is something that we could propose. I just comment for my colleague, of course, there are perhaps some city councils in Maryland that would have a different view of how important climate change is. So it might not be a universally popular position in MML, but they vote on these things, right?
And I would just add that the president of the Prince George's chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, Hyattsville Councilmember Joseph Solomon, is going to propose something like this. So we would already have a partner.
And then if it didn't make it for the MML, it could also be a chapter. And I hear we have some weight with the chapter these days. Just a little. Yeah.
One thing that, when they look at the legislative action requests, there's a series of questions like, well, how does this affect other municipalities and that kind of thing? If, for example, and I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but if the idea were to move the monies away from the bill assistance and more to that, it could be targeted for municipal programs that do these kinds of improvements. So it could be, you can stick municipal in there, then for the regular session, have a more general... municipal in there, then for the, for the regular session, have a more general one, but, but that could be very useful and that may be actually something that even a more conservative municipality might see as, as money for them
Beneficial, yes.
that they, that they otherwise wouldn't have, so.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Councilmember Kovar, did you have something?
Well, I had a question, but not about the, the particular matter that Councilmember Mel had mentioned, so.
Is it for me?
It is, yeah. But just a question for Councilmember Smith. You mentioned the roundtable at the MML conference, which was great, and I went to that and I think that was very valuable.
Have a photo of you.
You do? Oh, I need to get that. But, but you weren't saying that, or were you? I guess you can just talk about, was that alone kind of what we needed or do we still need to pass legislation to, in your opinion, get better notification?
Well, I don't think that we are at the point where all municipalities are happy with the relationship between the utilities.
And you shouldn't have to, like, go to a yearly conference to get that, right? So that helps, but that's not everything.
So I think this is something that will come back up once the legislative committee meets and, you know, the committee will decide whether or not members feel it's time to take legislation to fix this problem between the municipalities and the utilities.
So one of the other things I saw, and I think the State Roadways sent this about the speed limits, and I do have concerns about the speed limit on portions of Philadelphia Avenue. I guess the question is, is it, could we address that within the context of better legislation for SHA? Or, I mean, we, do we, we don't need two separate requests for the speed limit and other?
We would have to have two separate requests, but the speed limit bill, they, it's not new. People have tried to change the speed limits, but it has not passed. I don't know if that is something that we should make as our priority.
Given that it's, it's already.
Yes.
And then the other one we had, sorry if you mentioned this, was the evaluation, the collection, distribution of the personal property tax by the state of Maryland.
Yeah, that was one that was, something we discussed last year and the problem was there were just a number of the smaller municipalities that actually need the money and there isn't a trade-off for them.
So I have a question on that also, actually, if you don't mind. We've talked about that a lot. I have anyway. We could still address that
Locally.
locally, regardless of whether that was a priority for them, right? Because we don't, I mean, we can, we can adjust the rate, which we've talked about doing and I understand what.
But I think what we talked about last year was not to get rid of the personal property tax, but it was to, because it's a mess.
Yeah, it's a mess at the state level. So it was to call this, it was to basically put the state on, on the hook to, to clean it up like they had to clean up with the income tax distribution.
There just wasn't enough support for it.
You know, to me, that, that is one that might be just as effectively pursued, not through the legislature, but still through the, kind of the executive offices, because it's just, it is, I mean, to me, it's just an embarrassment.
Well, I think, just personally, I would also feel that if we commit, and I understand we don't have anywhere close to an agreement on the council yet, but if that's something at least we're going to drill into, I think we said we were, in enough time if we wanted to change it
Right.
to get it for next year, I'm fine doing it that way and not having it be one of our requests, because it sounds like we've got others that might be more interesting, so.
But there are two separate, so I guess I'm, there's two, two separate issues. One is what we do with the personal property tax here in Tacoma Park and we can do that.
And we should not wait along.
And we shouldn't wait. But the other thing was because the system is so, the way they're doing the collection and distribution is so messed up, we, last year I put forward legisla, the idea of legislation to make them clean up the system. And I think what I'm hearing the city manager say is, and from what Councilmember Smith said, the receptiveness or the lack of receptiveness last year, is that we might be better served just figuring that out and working through the system on getting that done.
And it, it might help if we have our lobbyists take up that issue, you know, because as a body, it just, it just didn't catch on.
Right.
You know, there were some municipalities that it was an issue for them, but it wasn't enough that said, okay, this should be a priority.
Yeah, I mean, many municipalities don't, don't charge this, that, so it didn't matter to them.
They just don't care about it.
So it didn't matter to them if it wasn't handled well.
And the biggest thing, you know, is HURs for, for everybody and that sucks up everybody's energy.
I have a follow-up on that. The state comptroller, would he have a role in any effort to better understand inventories, how inventories are identified, how inventories are identified to a jurisdiction?
My understanding is that, that the personal property tax doesn't have anything to do with the comptroller's office. And I think that's been part of, I mean, that made
Which, so who, which is the?
It's really, it's State Department of Assessment and Taxation. And it's an area, I mean, the state gets very little, doesn't get money out of it, so they don't care. It's, that's, so they don't devote very many staff to that. It's absolutely an orphan.
Yeah.
But it has exactly the same problem that the comptroller's office had with the, with the income tax, which is also, they didn't care about that and so they didn't keep their, their technology up and they, and they weren't rigorous about it. So it's, it's kind of a larger issue with, with Maryland. And that, to me, is, is the embarrassing part about it. So I don't know that we could find the, if your question is, could we find the information and get it straightened through another agency, there may be, I just don't know.
And I don't know if they'd have the interest. But one option would be, if we want to take this up again, I would think that the fight that a number of municipalities would want to eliminate all these little taxes and fees and maybe consider a piece of the sales tax, that's something I think people
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest issue, is that, you know, we're
Trader Vic.
Municipalities don't have, other than, other than property tax, they have so little revenue generating source. And I could see the state maybe moving, not next year, but maybe moving to the point where they say, okay, instead of having us spend the little bit of time that it takes to process these checks to the municipalities, a different, more regular process that allows us to assess our own residents.
I mean, and that's why I mentioned the comptroller's office, because they have a deep and personal understanding of what it means to get this kind of stuff wrong, but also of the, the consequence of if you understand the kinds of issues that we're talking about. If you, if you understand the technicalities of what the state isn't doing right now, then to be able to understand how that might affect business growth, development and prosperity in the state and how a different approach, for example, the sales tax approach, could represent a trade-off that like is simpler, is better for businesses, creates a more level playing field. But if you actually understand the nature of the problem and the nature of the revenue, you, you have an asset that you might be able to use in bargaining on tax policy and fees and other things. So there might be a, there might be a reason why someone like the comptroller's office could see value in taking it on, even though they don't have obvious jurisdiction over it, at least creating pressure within sort of the cabinet space of the governor, without having to go legislative route.
I think I'd like to, you know, go back to the suggestion from Councilmember Smith that we talk to our lobbyists about it, because they may, you know, they may be able to help, be helpful with us about how we, how we work with the various agencies to get some pressure. It's a good idea.
And I like, Councilmember Smith, what you put on the table of doing something that has municipalities getting a portion of the sales tax, even if it's just a conversation that we're starting.
Yes.
Because this, that would take a very long time, but I think starting that conversation.
Even if it's five years, start it now.
Well, it also raises the education level too of understanding
Right.
the little, the few ways that municipalities have to raise revenue.
Right.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my own thoughts on this, is that where you have with regard to the inventory tax or personal property tax, which is really what we're talking about here, if, if the comptroller's office, as you said, has nothing to do with it, it seems extremely unlikely to me that the comptroller's going to say, oh, let's just get involved in something that we don't really hope to have any revenue from. On the other, on the other side of that ledger, you've got municipalities who don't assess anything on the inventory or the equipment. And so that's a, a large constituency that's lost politically in the municipal, among the municipalities. My feeling is, is that, you know, that's, you know, we're just never going to get anywhere on, on a state legislative basis with trying to make some sense and, and straighten out a system. There's, there's not enough people, enough entities that have a vested interest statewide to be motivated to untangle this plate of spaghetti. So that, but what we can do would be just to sort of say, look, this is such a mess here. We, we just, in our own municipality, that what we want to be able to do is just get rid of it, period. So that we just don't even have to, our, our businesses and particularly our, it's our retail businesses that, that suffer, and, and figure out a way where we can get the money that would replace the lost revenue that we get, which is what, $300,000 or $400,000 of revenue, which is, on a 27, $29 million budget, is a small percent, very small percentage. But nevertheless, significant enough that you just can't, you know, write it off. And so if, you know, trying to get a piece of the state sales tax, sure, let's try that. If it takes five years, then fine, we'll all be, some doing something else five years from now, probably. But in the meantime, we're, we're having trouble just getting money on HUR.
Right. I, I think there's all that, but I do think that the other part here is a simple technology issue. And that is that the state has not had, and there's some legal reasons for income tax, but the state has not had even the technology that geolocates an address to identify if it's within a municipality or not. I mean, that's as basic as it gets. That technology across the computer platforms of the state would be valuable to many different agencies within the state. You know, people are so used to just using Google Maps, you'd think they'd get it, but it, but it really is an issue for the, for the state. And, and so it may be that it has nothing to do with what we're concerned about, which is economic development and, you know, kind of fair payment of taxes, and we should still pursue those. But there also might be some other things that are simply, gee, wouldn't you like to get this other computer system that, that geolocates where, and, and better keeps track of, of when somebody's at a location doing something and what municipality that's in.
Well, when I think about how badly the state of Maryland fouled up the whole idea of setting up a, a, a insurance exchange for Obamacare, you know, they set it up and the whole thing collapsed and they had to start all over again. And now we've got medical marijuana that's taken them four years and they have yet to open up the first dispensary in the whole state. I mean, if, if we can't do things like that, things that are mandated by law, I mean, gosh, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'd agree completely. Yes, it would be great if the state would do that, but the state hasn't demonstrated that it has the, the wits to be able to do something like that. And I, I just think that we need to stick to our guns here and focus on what our city can do. And that is, is that how do we replace $300,000, $400,000 in, in income that we're, that, so that we can then legitimately just zero out the thing, we'll have to never think about it again.
The lame duck has gotten pretty old.
All I can say to that is quack, quack.
So I think we have two things on the table, something regarding the Paris Climate Agreement and something, I would say something regarding sales tax.
Oh, and then?
Economic development.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And the economic development funding.
Completely, yeah, so.
And I'll send out the copy of the legislation.
Right. Yep. Sorry, I didn't put the number.
That, you know, this has been proposed.
It's already passed.
It's been passed, but the governor has not quite gotten around to figuring out a way to put any money into it.
Right.
I mean, what, what, what are the prospects there? I mean, because it's easy to be cynical about a Republican governor when it comes to small towns inside the Beltway, a lot of, of which are, you know, minority communities. But I, I don't want to be that cynical. I just want, I'm wondering what the chances are that the governor would fund, would create special funds for economic development in what are now called sustainable communities.
Well, that's part of the discussion with the, with our lobbyist about how we do that. You know, the other thing is that, that we're really in a different place than we were even a month ago, because we've had, you know, the questions about what happens with the Purple Line, and we've had the FBI building not being moved. All of a sudden, the state of Maryland is, is needing to focus a little more proactively as a state, I think, on economic development. And, and these two activities that just have happened recently, I think, kind of changed the discussion with the governor. But I would love to get the insight of some of the other officials in, that we work with and with our lobbyists. And we, and we may get some good ideas. I think there's some leverage, that we are in a different place and we may be able to get some leverage to get that kind of assistance.
I agree.
All right, so we have the three items, so we can move forward and you'll forward us some more information and then?
What are the three items?
The economic development fund, actually funding the economic development fund, a Paris Climate Agreement to, and one of the things that was put on the table was this idea of taking the money that is now
Goes to bill payment.
built in is, instead of paying people's bills, actually having that go towards rebates or something regarding, or helping people, or low-income people on renewable energy, right? Okay, or some other idea. And then the other, the third item was thinking about the municipalities getting a portion of the sales tax.
So are we not doing the SHA and those things? I didn't think that we were abandoning that.
I thought that was the conversation we had, that we weren't going to pursue.
I mean, the SHA utilities, I think that's going to be ongoing. I don't think we need to make that a, continue to make that a priority.
Okay. So in other words, that happens without us having?
Yes, I think, I think it's ingrained in MML.
We did our work there to make sure. It is a priority. So check that box. It is. Yep.
So, I mean, when the committee meets, we'll bring it up, but I don't think it's necessary to make it a.
One of our priorities to push them along.
Can I ask Councilmember Smith, we've had conversations with Senator Smith or Delegate David Moon as to what they would like our priorities to be from, you know, from the things that they're trying to hustle through this, through, through the state legislature?
No, I think we would probably do another meeting like we did last fall. And, I mean, from, given where the committees, both of them sit on, I'm not sure those are things MML would necessarily take up and given the issues that they worked on last year.
I mean, I've had conversations with both of those fellows recently and both of them are bursting with ideas. And, and it's exciting to talk to them about terms of things that they're hoping to work on. And maybe it wouldn't be an MML
Right.
LAR, but it might be something that we would want to support, offer our public support on.
Yeah, and I think we had a very successful meeting, joint meeting with them last December. And, you know, I think the way we, we were probably structured a little differently, how we approached the legislative session in Annapolis, but we gave them a lot of support on a number of the ones we agreed with. We didn't agree with everything.
Yeah, thanks. I just, I think I'm happy with where we are, but I just wanted to go back to the issue of the lower speed limit. I think it would be ideal for our city council to request our delegation to be the lead sponsors on a bill that says, that basically changes state law in one sentence. And the sentence is, you know, within municipal boundaries, municipalities can lower the speed is, you know, within municipal boundaries, municipalities can lower the speed limit from, you know, the lowest speed limit permissible is 20 miles an hour, right? So that's, and if the county then, you know, if they put together their bill and they shopped it with the county association, and the county's like, well, what about us? Like, great, you know, municipalities and counties. But I think it would be nice to get our delegation on record as championing this, even if it's just a bill, it doesn't, doesn't go anywhere.
Cool. All right, we can bring that up with our lobbyist. So the things we're going to bring up with our lobbyist, since she couldn't be here tonight, was to request regarding, with our delegation, regarding speed limits, the personal property tax. I feel like there was a third one, but, oh, maybe not. I think that was it. Okay. All right. I'm going to rely on the city clerk to get it, okay?
Just, either Councilmember Smith or our lobbyist, more detail on that law or that fund that's already been passed, just so we.
Yes.
Oh, right, Councilmember Smith's going to send that to us.
You're going to.
Okay.
Good. All right. We are adjourned.